Good morning.
Good morning.
We are trying to get some more room for overflow, so if anybody wants a seat, Barbara will help you find another place until your agenda item is called. Welcome, we're glad that you're here. And with that, I'd ask, our invocation today is to be held by Edward Kellum from First United Methodist Church in Tarpon Springs. Is Pastor Kellum here? Commissioner Welch, will you lead us in the invocation?
Sure.
And please stand, and then thereafter, Commissioner Welch is going to lead us in the invocation, and I would ask Commissioner Eggersen to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Madam Chair, let us pray. Father God, we thank you for this day, we thank you for a day that you have made, we rejoice and we are glad in it. We thank you for this wonderful community you've blessed us to live in, we thank you, Lord, for all those veterans who have served to protect our freedoms and allow us to participate in this democracy, Father. We ask you to bless these proceedings today, give this commission wisdom and understanding, bless us to hear the words that are spoken to us, bless all that come before us in a spirit of moving our community forward. In these and all things, we pray, amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and again, if you're here for citizens to be heard in particular, that is later in the agenda, and if you'd like to have a seat on the fourth floor, again, Barbara Hernandez will lead you to that area. Okay, we have presentations and awards, I will come down to the dais to do those. We are so fortunate this morning to have our Community Water Wise Awards, and I'd like to ask Doris Heitzman from the Florida Friendly Landscape Program, and she is the coordinator with the Pinellas County Extension, to come forward. Good morning, Doris, it's nice to see you.
Good to see you.
So, Doris, will you tell us about the Community Water Wise Awards program?
Yes, I'd love to. The Community Water Wise Awards program was started in 1998 to recognize property owners who are leading the way in outdoor water conservation. The winning landscapes each year are excellent examples of Florida-friendly landscaping practices at work. This annual awards program is a partnership between Tampa Bay Water, Pinellas County Extensions' Florida Friendly Landscaping Program, and Pinellas County Utilities. This year, we are recognizing one winner in the single-family residential category.
And will you call her forward, please?
Yes. Tanya, would you please come forward?
Hi.
Hi.
Pleasure.
Thank you. So, we have photo slides of the winning landscape that we were showing at the present time. Tanya began creating and planning her landscape four years ago when she moved from Tampa to Safety Harbor, and what a pleasant community Safety Harbor is. She had no interest in maintaining a traditional yard, so she decided to install plants and trees that are low in water use and maintenance, and at the same time have a purpose. Her planet palette includes fruit trees, herbs, and many native flowering plants to attract a variety of wildlife and pollinators. Tanya not only distributes her bounty of fruit and plants with friends, family, and neighbors, she also reaches out to the community by sharing and planting fruit trees for them. In addition to the Community Water Wise Award, Tanya just received the Gold Standard Florida Friendly Yard Recognition. On behalf of all the residents of Pinellas County, I thank you for your exceptional and hard work.
Thank you.
Would you like to say anything?
Sure.
I just want to say thank you for the award and the nice presentation, and I want to also use this time to say how important it is that we use our water wisely. Obviously, in our landscape, I think it's 30% of our water usage goes towards our landscape. So with, you know, it's important to obviously conserve the water and have a landscape that is respectful of that, and that it's obviously organic and biodiverse for all of our, for everyone in the environment. Thank you.
And it's so nice that you share your bounty of beautiful fruits and so on with friends and neighbors.
Thank you.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Appreciate it.
And we have a stepping stone, as you can see, isn't that beautiful?
Yes, gorgeous, thank you, it's heavy.
Yeah.
And I think, did Heather from Shamsi make this?
Heather Richardson from Shamsi, did she make this?
Oh, okay.
I think it's locally made, so, thank you, local artist.
It's locally made.
Oh, great.
Okay. If we can just move, we'll kind of center ourselves.
You want to hold it or?
I don't know. Hit, I mean, it's okay.
Is that it? Because we don't know.
Okay.
Is our board photographer here?
There he is.
Here we go. As you can see, it's going to be a biz.
Hurting traffic here this morning. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is our Doing Things Employee Recognition Award. I'd ask Don Schantz to come forward, and also have the county administrator come down. Don.
Hi, there's. Hi, how are you? I'm good. Good. Our employees work hard every day to make our community better. In our ongoing video program, we recognize employees who exemplify the dedication of our Pinellas County team. It's only through our employees and the excellent work that they do that we can fulfill our vision to be the standard for public service in America. Pinellas County operates one of the busiest emergency management systems, EMS, in the nation. Don Schantz works behind the scenes to improve the response times for 911 calls, keeping our technology up to date, and helping our citizens with sensitive record requests. Don started her career with the county almost nine years ago as a 911 telecommunicator, and found her niche in her current job as administrative support specialist. The hard work by Don and her team at Safety and Emergency Services ensures that our citizens continue to get life-saving help anywhere in our community within a matter of minutes. So, we're going to show a video, which gives us a snapshot of the work Don does every day.
Sending emergency help within minutes requires careful coordination, especially in one of the busiest EMS systems in the nation.
Could you take a look at a call for me, please?
Of course. At Pinellas County Regional 911, Don Schantz ensures all the moving parts behind the scenes run smoothly.
Everybody's very proud of what they do, it's always a collaborative effort, and everybody's job is important, from call taker up to the director. Working in the administrative department, I'm lucky because I'm able to see how all the pieces of the puzzle fit together.
Don is good at putting the pieces together. When the new 911 center opened five years ago, she helped the department acquire state-of-the-art technology used by the county and partner agencies to streamline the dispatch of life-saving services. Recently, her team improved response times by creating a visual map of the entire process, from the time a call comes into the 911 center, routes through public safety agencies, to the moment first responders arrive. Don's team also helps citizens by overseeing access to sensitive 911 records.
911 records, you'd be surprised at how many people actually request their records. We started out in 2011 with 2,500 records requests a year, or annually, and now we're up to 7,500 records requests.
In her time at the county, Don has cut record request times in half. She is often called on to authenticate these records in court.
They're used for a number of different reasons. One of them is car crashes, you know, when there's somebody speeding, or they want to see if they were a DUI driver, or if there's a witness to a car crash, they pull those records.
Don didn't necessarily plan to start a career at the county when she got her first job as a 911 telecommunicator almost nine years ago, but she found a niche at Safety and Emergency Services with her collaborative approach and eye for detail. That extra attention, particularly on equipment purchases, has saved the county and taxpayers big money while keeping our 911 technology at the cutting edge.
I didn't really think that I was going to be here for as long as I did, I didn't know what I had in store, but working for the county and working for 911 is very exciting. It's great to be able to help the public.
Her motivation and tasks, both large and small, is a sense of pride.
You just have to have determination, you have to love your job and the people that you work with. Hi, I'm Don Schantz, and I am Pinellas County.
Don, would you like to say something?
Um, I think I said it. No, just thank you for this honor, sorry. Two bosses over there, couldn't do it without them, that's it. Thank you.
Do your two bosses, would they like to come forward and be part of the picture while Barry's making some remarks?
Well, if there's ever an area where everybody knows what their job is, and you have a clear mission, you know, it's there at our 911 center. And, you know, and it really does take a team, it's not just the 911 operator, it's from, you know, start to end, and all the things in between, and you're a key part of making all that happen and come together. So, thank you so much for everything you do, you know, congratulations with your success.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner?
Very nice. Count to three, one, two, three. If the bottom row could take one step to your...
Left?
Yeah, oh yeah, we didn't have a presentation.
Oh, thank you. Okay, switch left, one step left, one step left. Is that better?
Better. That's better, thank you.
Do I look thinner?
I'm going to take two, one, hang on, one, two, three. One, two, three, thank you.
Thank you, congratulations.
officer for RCS Pinellas. And she is here today representing AMI Kids Pinellas. Welcome, Melinda, thank you.
Good morning, I'm Melinda Perry, I'm also on the Board of AMI Kids Pinellas, which is why we're here today, so thank you very much for taking time to hear what we have to say. So, this is Robert Johnson, Executive Director of AMI Kids Pinellas, and he will actually be doing the presentation today.
Thank you, thank you for having us. I wanted to come share something that I'm really passionate about, it's the kids of Pinellas County. I am the Executive Director of AMI Kids Pinellas. AMI Kids has a bigger footprint, we're a nationally recognized organization. I've been with AMI Kids Pinellas since about 2003. Our kids are unique, we run a prevention diversion program. These kids are young men that we're trying to keep out of the Department of Juvenile Justice. And we work hard with our kids with our model and encouraging the kids to come to school. One of our challenges, we have a young man, and I think some of you all had the opportunity recently to tour, a young man named Austin. Austin had missed 86 days the previous school year. He's missed two school days since being with us. And some of the unique things that we do with our transportation, we have young men that through our partnerships with the families and the community, we were able to identify there's a young man that he takes prescribed medications. And if he doesn't take his prescribed medications, well, if he does take it, his mother then puts a rubber band on his wrist. He comes out to the bus, and if he gets to the bus and doesn't have this rubber band on, the driver knows that he hasn't taken his medication. And we're able to round the block and come back to his home so he can take that medication to be successful during that school day. And our challenge is, one of the things that, we've recently moved to Pinellas Park more centrally located, we were on Passag Grill for 45 years. And moving more centrally located has given us an opportunity to expand further north and increase our catchment area, to be able to serve more youth in Pinellas County. It's an opportunity for us to increase our bus routes and a chance to serve more families, which I think is a service that's really needed. We have a large number of middle school credits that have been made up by our young people. We have a young man that actually came in to us, graded in the sixth grade. That young man now is in the ninth grade after one year of being with us. What I would like to see, what I would ask and encourage, if we could partner with the commission and find ways to increase the opportunities to expand our catchment area, to be able to serve more youth, to be able to get the services that we provide to our young families. Thank you. Any questions?
Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I want to thank Mr. Johnson and Ms. Perry for coming in. I was one of the commissioners that had the opportunity to tour, and it was very impressive you had the young men leading the tour. But I knew, Mr. Johnson, you come from great stock as a Lakewood Spartan, so that's what I expected. Talking about your countywide approach, how have you been able to expand the catchment area?
When we moved centrally, more centrally in Pinellas Park, we were able to move up to at least alternate 19. We have to, and being mindful of the length of the bus routes, we have to try to keep those routes under 90 minutes, and that's still a long time for a kid to be on a bus. So, right now, we'll go up to alternate 19, we've had requests as far as Palm Harbor. I have a couple of young men that their families even drive them to school from the Palm Harbor area to get them access to our services.
What's your mix of funding, you receive state funding?
Yes, we have a contract with the Department of Juvenile Justice, and are also partnered with Pinellas County Schools. And we have a cooperative agreement with Pinellas County Schools to provide services that we provide.
Thanks for all you're doing.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Commissioner Eggers.
Yeah, I also got a chance to tour down there. What an impressive young men that you have there, and the teachers, how attentive they were, and the quote, "reward" system that they have on almost everything that they get involved in. Couple of them seemed a little quieter and shyer, and then, but when that was their time to stand up, they stood right up and spoke whatever they were dealing with that day. But the tour was, the tour guides, the two of them, one was Austin, did really a great job talking about their future, what they're hoping to get, you know, what they're hoping to do, and just was really impressive. So, keep up the great work. I think you'd said that you're covering that mid-county area pretty well, but on the extreme, it's hard to get down to Commissioner Welch's area and my area up north, so we'll see what we can do to try to partner up and do some, maybe help you out a little bit, we'll see. But thank you so much for what you're doing.
Thank you very much.
Really great stuff.
Okay, thank you for what you do, and thank you, Melinda, do you want to add anything?
Sorry, I also wanted to thank the commission for sponsoring our event that we had on Thursday night, thanks to Commissioner Welch for kind of making that happen. It was a great, successful event, so one of our other funding sources is just general fundraising, so that was really important, so thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Good to see you. Good job.
Okay. We're moving on to our public hearings, and our first one is under the Countywide Planning Authority, and it's Agenda Item 5.
Good morning. Items 5 through 7 are proposed amendments to the Countywide Plan Map. The public hearing was properly advertised, the affidavits of publication have been received for filing, no correspondence has been received, the matters are properly before the authority to be heard.
Okay, we don't have anyone, any cards of anyone who wishes to speak on this agenda item? Is there anyone who wishes to speak on Agenda Item 5? Okay, I'll close the public hearing.
Move approval, Madam Chair.
Second. A motion by Commissioner Long, and a second by Commissioner Gerard. Can we pull up the voting cards? Whoops.
It's not coming up on my...
Did you join yet?
Yes.
I didn't.
It's doing.
I'm a yes.
I'm a yes as well, I'm having trouble getting the agenda to pull up. Okay, it's unanimous approval. Agenda Item 6.
If we...
She read all, she read all three.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. I also don't have any cards for anyone speaking on this agenda item, is there anyone who wishes to speak on Agenda Item 6? Okay, then I'll close the public hearing.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Gerard, second by Commissioner Long, and I'm still not able to pull my voting cards up, or join the meeting. My vote is a yes?
I'm a yes.
Yes.
Okay, that has unanimous approval. Agenda Item 7, again, I don't have any cards on this, is there anyone who wishes to speak on Agenda Item 7? I'll close the public hearing.
Wait, Madam Chair, I do believe the gentleman wants to speak, he's going to get a card.
Okay.
Are you? No.
No?
Okay. Okay. A move approval.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Long, a second by Commissioner Gerard, and I am closing the public hearing.
We knew you were.
So, the public knows. And I'm a yes as well. Commissioner Eggers, are you a yes? Thank you very much, we're moving on to Agenda Item 8, sitting as the Board of County Commissioners.
Item number 8 is Proposed Resolution and Ordinance Approving a One-Year Extension of the Pinellas Park Community Redevelopment Agency and Redevelopment Trust Fund. The public hearing was properly advertised, the affidavit of publication has been received for filing, a letter from the mayor of Pinellas Park was received in support of the request. The matter is properly before the Board to be heard.
Okay, I have no cards on this, anybody who wishes to speak on Agenda Item 8? I'll close the public hearing.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Long, second by Commissioner Welch.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, unanimous approval, moving on to Agenda Item 9.
My notes reflect that Item 9 has been deferred to the December 10 BCC meeting.
Okay, this is going to be deferred to the December 10 County Commission Meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? I have no cards on this agenda item. Okay, I'll close the public hearing.
Move approval, Madam Chair.
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Long, second by Commissioner Gerard. And I am a yes as well. Okay. All right, I am going to use Commissioner's privilege and move Agenda Items 15 to 17 forward. We have a lot of long public hearings, and so, Item 15?
Item 15 is a quasi-judicial hearing. All those wishing to give testimony in this item, please stand and take the oath. Thank you. Item fifteen is a quasi judicial petition to vacate, which was submitted by Frank Librio, for a private drainage easement located across the southern westernly portion of Lot Three and a portion of the fifteen-foot wide private drainage and utility easement located along the westernly boundary of Lot Three, Shady Lane subdivision. The public hearing was properly advertised. The affidavit of publication has been received for filing. Letters of no objection have been received from the appropriate parties. All interested parties have been notified as to the date of the public hearing. No correspondence has been received. The matter is properly before the board to be heard.
Okay, I have just one card by the applicant in favor of the recommendation. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on Agenda Item fifteen? Okay, I'll close the public hearing.
And move staff's recommendation.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Welch and second by Commissioner Peters. And I'm a yes as well. We'll move on to Agenda Item Sixteen.
Agenda Item Sixteen is also a quasi judicial hearing. All those wishing to give testimony in these items, please stand and take the oath. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth in the testimony you are about to give? Signify by saying I do.
Okay, thank you. I have two speakers who are both in favor of the agenda item, and they will waive speaking unless anybody has any questions. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on Agenda Item Sixteen? Okay, I'll close the public hearing.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gerard and second by Commissioner Long. And I'm a yes as well. Thank you, passes unanimously. Moving on to Agenda Item Seventeen.
Agenda Item Seventeen is legislative petition to vacate submitted by H. Two Thousand Four Inc. for the north ten feet of Dorothy Street, lying continuous with the south boundary of Block One, Oak Crest subdivision. The public hearing was properly advertised. The affidavit of publication has been received for filing. Letters of no objection have been received from the appropriate parties. All interested parties have been notified as to the date of the public hearing. One letter in opposition to the petition has been received. The matter is publicly before, properly before the board to be heard.
Okay, I also have one person who is in favor of this, and they will waive their time if there's no objections. Are there any questions by the commissioners? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on Agenda Item Seventeen? I'll close the public hearing.
Move approval, Madam Chair.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Long, second by Commissioner Gerard.
We have a...
Hold up.
We have one citizen who just showed up to speak on Seventeen.
Seventeen? Okay. Please come forward.
He doesn't want to speak on Lester's opposition.
Okay, all right. There doesn't seem to be any opposition, sir. It's good news. Okay, we'll go ahead and open up the voting poll, please. I am a yes. Okay, that passes unanimously. Okay, moving back to Agenda Item Ten.
Agenda Item Ten is case number ZLU twenty-one-ten-nine nineteen. It is a quasi judicial hearing. All those who wish to give testimony in this item, please stand and take the oath. Do you swear to tell the truth in the testimony you're about to give? Please signify by saying I do.
Is this, is this not, hasn't there been a request for this to be deferred?
This was requested to be deferred to the December tenth meeting.
Yes, that's what I was just going to mention. The applicant has requested deferral to December tenth. So, of the two speakers that are here and speaking in favor, is it okay for you to wait until December tenth?
Yes.
Okay, great. Anybody else wish to speak on this, Agenda Item Ten? I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion to defer to...
Deferment to December tenth.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Eggers, a second by Commissioner Long.
I'm a yes.
Okay, very good.
Agenda Items eleven, twelve, and thirteen are quasi judicial hearings. All those who wish to give testimony on any of these items, please stand and take the oath. Do you swear to tell the truth in the testimony you're about to give? Please signify by saying aye. Thank you. Item eleven is ZLU two-two-ten-nineteen. It's an application of Alderman Crossings LLC for a change in zoning from RM multi-family residential to C two general commercial and services, and a land use change from residential urban to commercial general. The public hearing was properly advertised. The affidavit of publication has been received for filing. One letter in opposition to the application has been received, and the matter is properly before the board to be heard.
Okay, I have no cards for Agenda Item Eleven. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on Agenda Item Eleven? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Your motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Welch and second by Commissioner Justice. Passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Twelve.
Item Twelve is case Z seventeen-ten-nineteen. It is an application of Donald E. Hess, Pauline D. Hess, Stephen T. Hess, and Michael A. Hess for a change in zoning from R-a residential agriculture and R-r rural residential to LI Limited Institutional. The public hearing was properly advertised. The affidavit of publication has been received for filing. One letter in opposition to the application has been received. The matter is properly before the board to be heard.
Okay, very good. We have several cards, but all are in favor of this particular case. Are there any questions by the commissioners?
Just one...
Yes, sir.
Just one question for staff. I noticed the vote on the LPA was five-one, so I'm just curious as to what the one vote against, what their rationale was.
Glenn.
Good morning, Glenn.
Good morning. Glenn Bailey, zoning manager. There was some opposition from neighbors to the northwest and the little single-family subdivision there. They were concerned about noise, things like that. I assume that's what triggered that no vote. I don't recall what specifically she said.
Okay. Do we have any provisions to deal with any noise issues?
There are things in the code that require certain setbacks from things like ball fields, things like that. It's a place of worship, what they're asking for, generally a pretty quiet use. They're not asking for any schools or anything like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Eggers?
There are three parcels in this. The western parcel is the one that goes back into that neighborhood. If you look at the neighborhood to the northwest, which is the homes around Garland Circle. So, from my perspective, when you start intruding into a residential neighborhood with that property, that concerns me, at least the back half of the western piece. The other two seem to go into what is really building up to be a pretty institutional slash residential slash office community that fronts Revere Road. So, I don't have as much problem with those two parcels, but I do have a problem with the west parcel. So, the question is, can we do anything at this hearing that talks about the back half of that property and what can be done on that property as far as use goes? I know we don't have a lot of site plan stuff approval here, but I would like to at least approve this, but I'd like it contingent on some kind of, because churches can be quiet, but they also have kids. We all like to have kids be part of the church, and they can use that back area pretty loudly. So, I'm just wondering what, without getting into the site plan and without trying to pull that parcel out and deny that piece, what can we do to secure the back half of that property?
Right now, just relying on the code. The code requires a six-foot-high opaque fence, and it requires setbacks, again, for the recreational areas. But, yes, it's simply a zoning change request, so you would have to do something like a development agreement to, you know, set more buffers like that and restrict particularly uses in that section of the property.
Yeah, well, from my perspective, I'm not comfortable with this as it stands, so I won't be supporting it. I think we need to be talking, this is the kind of the classic, classic situation where you buy into a neighborhood and you buy property that's part of a residential neighborhood or property behind it is part of a residential neighborhood, and then after the fact, find, which I consider unacceptable intrusion into a residential neighborhood. So, that to me is a problem, so I won't be supporting it. I wish we had some other avenue we could do today for that, but those are my comments and thoughts. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Welch.
So, following up on Commissioner Eggers' points, where on that map will the, this is a new facility that will be built there?
Correct.
Will it be located on the eastern part or closer to the western neighborhoods?
At this point, for zoning change, they're not required to submit a concept plan, so that's up in the air. They just have to meet setbacks and, again, go through site plan review, but as far as a request for a zoning change, you're not required to have concept plans or any site plans.
So, you see the map that we see?
Yes.
The building that's on the western part of that, is that a home?
This right here, it's a single-family home here.
Right there, that's a home?
Yes, and it's also a single-family home over here as well. Right now, it's zoned for agricultural purposes or residential, but it could have horses, things like that. It's pretty low density.
Well, I tend to agree with Commissioner Eggers on that one. It seemed like logically you could make this fit if the development was further away from the homes, but you're saying at this point, we can't designate that.
Not without a development agreement or a conditional overlay.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm glad to hear those questions about site plan coming in from you, Commissioner Welch.
Gearing up.
Yeah, there are other churches in the area, like you mentioned, up to the north off Riviera. There's three churches and right directly across the street on Riviera.
Can you show us? Can you point to them?
There's a church up in this area here, and there's some right here. And this here is a preschool as well, and as you know, US Nineteen's over here, so it's kind of a transition area from US Nineteen to going to the west.
And one other question, Madam Chair. So, the neighborhoods, the neighbors that were in opposition, can you point to them?
They were along Garland Circle. This property to the north is a single-family home. They have this large open area back here. That's where they do horses. They have horses back there. Just to let you know what that is.
Do you want to see if anybody from the applicant could, so, talk about the site plan at all?
Be great.
Okay. Is there anyone here representing the applicant or who can speak in behalf to talk about the site plan? And how you can minimize impacts to the neighbors, please. Good morning. Could you identify yourself?
My name is Ataf Hannah, three-one-five-Tall Trail, Carpen Springs, representing both the buyer and the seller. Further...
Jeremiah. Yeah, I live in the five-three-three side, we drive Alsmore.
Just quickly, after the LPA meeting, we took it upon ourselves to meet with the neighbors. So, we met at the Hess family residence, and we talked about all the issues that the three opposing houses were around us. And we, at the end of the meeting, it was very positive because we talked about how we can work with them on the noise, how we can work with them. They had some requests like a block wall instead of a vinyl wall to absorb the noise and all that, so we told them that we will be working with you. Any new building or development, we will come and talk to you even before we submit to the county. And we wanted to be good neighbors. So, it was very positive, and we told them, I mean, basically, we want the building to be really at the southeast corner, at the corner of Revere and Tampa Road. Parking probably is going to be behind, so we don't really impact any traffic. The area at the back probably is going to be used for attenuation, retention, so because of the configuration, it's probably not conducive to do something at the back. But at the end of the meeting, they were very happy. We are very, we're part of the southeast diocese of the United States. Our churches are, like, have a limit in capacity. Once you reach the one-eighty families, you cannot really be in that church anymore. So, we have two churches, one in Uperitchi and one in Clearwater, and we want it halfway between the two, so that was the perfect site, because most of the members actually live in the Palm Harbor area. We, I mean, we're not going to go above one-eighty families. That's basically, yeah, and we understand the kids are there, but we will work with the neighbors. We don't want to be bad neighbors.
We appreciate your efforts to work with the neighbors. That's always very important, and thank you for meeting with them and continuing to work.
It's important. They're our future, I mean, they're our future neighbors, so it's important that we are both together. So, they were, like, one of the worries was, okay, if you build a fence here, I want it to be, you know, just, you know, just, some of them, one of them had a botanical garden that wanted to protect, and he said, well, I want a block wall here. So, I said, let's just work together. We'll be together in this. So, it's, we're here for them, and we will not be, it's going to be a positive.
Wonderful. Commissioners, you have Commissioner Gerard.
Question, one of the people that was opposed wanted exits only onto Tampa Road. Is that going to be a possibility?
Exiting on Tampa Road is difficult because of the, someone was to exit, would cross the lanes to get to the U-turn to get on Nineteen, to get east on Tampa Road. I don't think that's probably not an option, but we will appreciate like a right-in at least to get to the site from Nineteen. Two, we have two, I think we have two entrances. We can use one. We don't have to have two.
Go ahead.
Question.
Yes, Commissioner Eggers.
On this property, on the western piece, that as it goes back, it abuts three residential neighborhood homes around Garland Circle. I'm assuming those are the people that you spoke to. Did you speak to those three property owners?
Yes, they were part of our meeting. We had a Saturday morning meeting, and they came.
So, those three, all of them were...
They wanted to come support us today. But we told them there is no, there's no need. I mean, it's, we're working together, but...
Like the chairman said, I really appreciate your reaching out to the neighborhood. I mean, that's, this is classic intrusion into a residential neighborhood, so the fact that you reached out to them and had dialogue, I think, is a positive thing, and whatever it needs, we don't do site plan work here. Is it, you know, that staff, I wish we could do a little bit, but they tell me I can't. So, anyway, I appreciate what you've done to ameliorate that problem, so thank you.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
Providing some clarity to the issue and, again, meeting with the neighbors.
Thank you so much.
Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing. Is there a...
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Long, second by Commissioner Welch.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Okay, it passes six to one. Okay, thank you very much. We are now moving on to Agenda Item 13. We have both proponents and opponents, so we are going to need, start with a staff presentation.
Item 13 is case ZLU 19-10-19. I've already sworn in those who wish to speak. This is an application of P&amp;P Tampa Property LLC for a change in zoning from RM multifamily residential to C1 neighborhood commercial and a land use change from residential low medium to commercial general. The public hearing was properly advertised. The affidavit of publication has been received for filing. Fifty-one letters in opposition to the application have been received. The matter is properly before the board to be heard.
Good morning again, Glenn Bailey, Pinellas County Plan Department. Going in this case, the subject area is .93 acres on the southwest corner of US Alternate 19 and Wooddove Avenue in Tarpon Springs area. It's a portion of a larger 1.59 acre parcel. I'll show you the map in a moment. Future land use map amendment against from residential low medium to commercial general and Atlas amendment from multifamily residential to commercial neighborhood. Existing use is vacant. The zoning right now would allow up to 16 multifamily units on the property, and proposed use is neighborhood scale commercial. So you see an aerial of the property. The blue area is a subject area, the amendment area. The entire parcel goes all the way back to here. This part is proposed to maintain residential multifamily where they were talking about putting up the six units in there. So this portion in the front is what's, you're requesting amended to commercial neighborhood. So it would still provide a buffer back here to the residential subdivision to the west via the part that they're leaving out of the amendment request. See, along Alternate 19 in this area is a lot of commercial. This is part in Tarpon Springs, part unincorporated. There's an industrial complex just to the north of the property across the entrance road subdivision. This vacant land here is also commercially designated. This is commercially designated, and all through here is commercially designated along Alternate 19. As you can see, it's very close to Pasco County line, give you a perspective of where it is located. And a single-family subdivision back here called Forest Ridge, and more residential uses to the east of Alternate 19. There's existing and proposed. You see the orange is residential multifamily color on the future land use map, and it would go to commercial general. And the C1 is a zoning district. See, there's a lot of red on the other side of Alternate 19, and the gray area is actually industrial or employment to land use. The E2 is our heavy commercial district. The entrance road to subdivision is actually still zoned E2. The C2 is our general retail commercial district just to the south in that vacant area. The green is showing you some preservation area, some insensitive areas there, probably wetlands. And the white areas in City of Tarpon Springs are all that is commercial. There's a shopping center here, and down here is also designated as commercial. So it is in the middle of a commercial corridor. This is a zoning map only, just to provide you some color there. The, this is, again, the multifamily residential, the actual RPD district is single-family, the way it's built. This is the industrial area to the north. This is the entrance road, which is somehow zoned commercial. You see on four sides is the subject property, notwithstanding this area that's not part of the amendment is actually a commercial zone right now. See, in the purple area is the City of Tarpon Springs, and this is a single-family residential duplex triflex in this yellow area here. Here's an aerial photo of the amendment area. You see the entrance, this is Wooddove Avenue. It goes back to the residential subdivision to the west. This is the industrial complex that exists across the street. This is all zoned commercial here, so auto repair stations, things like that. This vacant area, again, is zoned commercial, and this is all zoned commercial. Just off the screen is that, the shopping center to the north. This is the environmentally sensitive areas, preservation to the south. Some site photos, looking north along US Alternate 19, you see the entrance, Wooddove Avenue here, the commercial uses across the street. Just looking towards the subject property, subject property is right here. It's actually, this entrance sign is on the subject property, which is interesting. I'm not sure how that happened, but that's something that has to be dealt with on the private side. You see, it's generally a grassy moat area as far as the subject property is concerned. In the front here is a drainage tract that really can't be touched. That's important regarding access to this property. I'll get to that, more of that in a moment. Some additional information, existing multifamily designations were established in 2005 by the board. Previously to that, they were designated light industrial and heavy commercial, similarly to the other surrounding properties on that side of Alternate 19, so it used to be commercial and it used to be industrial on the land use map. Again, townhomes propose to remainder of the parcel in the west portion. The subject property is actually a part of the Forest Ridge subdivision plat. I can show you the map of that if you'd like. It's identified on that plat as a commercial tract. So that's an important back end when they created the parcel, created the plat, it was basically defined as a commercial tract. As far as the access, go back to the map here. So there's a drainage tract right along Alternate 19. As you know, it's a state road, so access off of Alternate 19 would be problematic because of that. It's also very close to that other entranceway. We want to keep the driveways further apart as possible. So access, most logical access would be off Wooddove Avenue. I'm not, this is going to be brought up. It is a private road, so that is something that has to be looked at during site plan review, but it's not really a zoning issue because it doesn't matter what the zoning is, it's still going to be, something has to be resolved regarding access to the property. It is part of that plat. That is a private road that provides access to all the other properties in that plat. Okay. Back to recommendations, staff fills, the proposed amendments are appropriate because of the mixed and non-residential uses in general area along US Alternate 19. It has existing commercial and employment designations on three sides. The other side is the other part of the property itself. It's identified as a commercial tract on the Forest Ridge plat, and the west side of such property remain residential. Again, about 150 feet of that would buffer the commercial portion if approved from the other part of the subdivision. Staff recommends approval, and the local planning agency came to no recommendation on this one. They tied.
Glenn, I have one question. Could you go back to the homeowners association sign?
Yes.
Will that remain? Because that was one of the questions that came up in the correspondence that we received.
It's a private issue because it's on the applicant's property. I'm not sure how that happened.
It is on the applicant's property?
And it confused me going out there. I thought it was, I couldn't tell what the property line was. I had no idea at the time, early on in the process, that that was actually on the subject property, so it's pretty interesting.
Okay. So the picture next to the homeowners is the Forest Ridge sign, the green grass over here to the right?
Yes, that's the subject property. Subject property basically goes almost to the sidewalk.
Okay. Any questions for Glenn? Yes, Commissioner Justice.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Current designation of residential low medium would allow for what kind of density in?
Ten units per acre, which in this case would be 16 units.
Okay.
And instead, they're proposing to do nine?
They're proposing to do six on the west portion, and then the rest would be like a neighborhood commercial use that allows certain light commercial uses like a barber shop or offices, things like that.
Madam Chair. Could you, Commissioner, okay, Commissioner Eggers?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. So the access road, it's got E2 on it for, I don't have any idea why. I guess that's what it was before. When it got changed, it didn't get changed.
The plat was done in 1989. I guess at the time, they thought it wasn't.
Who owns that property?
Association.
The association back behind it, back, back.
Which this plat is a part of that, this parcel is a part of that plat, but the association is a private road.
So since there is technically access from Alt 19, they don't have to grant access along that road?
That's a private issue. I cannot, I cannot answer that question.
You can't answer the question. So, so my understanding was is that any property needs to be able to have access to it.
That issue came, that issue came up in 2004 or '05 in the last public hearing on this property, and it was, there was a letter provided, I saw in the file, that said that they do have access, but that's, that's a legal issue.
Who, they said, who's they?
It was some attorney letter back in, back in 2004.
That said what?
That they actually had legal access to Wooddove Avenue.
The front property owner?
Right.
Had legal.
But that wasn't, that was 15 years ago, so.
Okay, so that, that's a question. I mean, just, obviously, that commercial property across the street is the back end of the property. It has, there's no access. If you go, I got out there today, and you could tell that there was no, there's, it's all a wired fence along that side, so I'm assuming that the same issue, I'm talking about to the north.
This side? This side?
The E1 property, the E1 property to the north, the gray area there.
Oh, this one, correct.
Yeah, there's no access to that, to that roadway.
Their access is off to the north of Anclode.
Correct. So no access to that road on any of the northern properties at all to that, to that road. And then the traffic impact of the residential seemed rather alarming as compared to the, as I sat in the traffic this morning, it was horrible. Going south was obviously worse, but what, talk to me a little bit about the traffic impact of what is currently allowed and then what would be allowed.
Our analysis of that basically looks at the commercial general land use and the .55 FAR, means 55% of the area could potentially be built with some type of commercial use. So worst-case scenario, we would add, I believe the numbers were in the 900 range, 900 trips per day.
Compared to?
What's there now? What would be allowed now? Multifamily use, you know, it's a lot lower, it's even lower than single-family use.
So what, compared to the 900 per day, what was that number?
I would have to look at my notes.
I just want to make sure I'm looking at the right thing. That's why I'm asking you, Glenn. I'm seeing, I'm seeing for the commercial, 1,038, and I'm seeing for the multifamily, 59, but I just want to make sure that I was looking at the right thing, so.
Yes, correct.
So for the commercial use, over 1,000 cars per day and the other at 59 cars a day.
Yes, that's assuming maximum build-out at.
In both cases, maximum.
Correct, correct.
So, okay, that's all the questions I have for now.
Could you go back to the aerial for a minute for me?
This one?
Is there, can you possibly laser the area that's owned by the applicant?
It's this area right here.
The entire, okay.
Right. The property line is just on this side of the sidewalk. The sign is right here.
Okay.
And it goes up to about the sidewalk on the front as well.
I see.
It may be easier to see here.
Yeah.
So this is their property.
The entire, right, okay.
Correct. This, it pretty much goes right along the sidewalk, so it's.
So they built both properties, the front and the back piece?
Correct, right. They were proposing to leave this as multifamily because they didn't want to go all the way back against the single-family residential.
So again, the access into Forest Ridge, the driveway, the street, that's owned by them?
Yes.
And so they have built that and maintained it for the rest of the other neighborhoods, essentially, right?
Correct.
It's only their neighborhood.
And this is part of that plat. I can show you that map if you'd like.
So in reality, if they wish to build the six units, if this is changed behind that, they depend on the goodwill of Forest Ridge to get to that?
Correct, and as is right now, they could build 16 units, but they would still have to have access off their road.
Okay.
That's what I was asking about in terms of, do they have, maybe it's a question for the attorney, do they, are they in a position to deny them access to the property along that side because it fronts the other street? Regardless of how they could build over, they could build over the, I guess, that drainage easement along, along 19, so they could access that technically. So they would have, because of that, then they would have the right not to allow access along that road?
Without knowing what sort of agreements there are between the applicant property owner and the owner of the driveway there, I can't speak to what they could or cannot do. Suffice it to say that an owner of property is always going to be granted access from somewhere, whether that's to the main road, which I suspect based on what Glenn's saying, we probably have some standards that would.
Make it difficult.
Deter against having access off of Alternate 19, but there is always going to be a legal remedy to provide access to a piece of property, whether that's through some sort of prescriptive easement or some alternative process. But again, I don't know what sort of private agreements may already be in place. There may be some historic agreements in place, and that may be what led to the sign being there, but again, I don't, I don't know what's in place and what's between the two owners.
Thank you. No questions for now.
Anybody further before? Okay, I believe the applicant is represented by Hush Gavahi, and this, they're allowed 20 minutes altogether for presentation and then any follow-up. After we hear from Mr. Gavahi, we have others who are in support.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Hush Gavahi. I'm with Northside Engineering, located in Clearwater, 300 South Balthor Road, and I have been sworn in. Please bear with me this morning, I have an issue with my ear, so I don't know if I'm speaking loudly or, I don't know where I am, so please bear with me. Before I started this, I just wanted to tell you about your staff and how wonderful they are. I just wanted to just put it out there. I deal with them just about every day and, non-related to this project, obviously, but they really do a wonderful job, so thank you for have hiring or have hired those folks that you have, so I'm enjoying working with them. Glenn eloquently described the project. He really went through the whole thing and were in total agreement with what he's saying. The project is consistent with the neighborhood. He also alluded to this project towards the end of his presentation where it was changed from zoning and land use IL to residential 2004, 2005. So I wanted to bring you back to, let's say, 13, 14, 15 years ago. This land was industrial, the whole entire piece, 1.6 acres, was industrial. At the time, this very owner decided to go ahead and change that, and that was before you folks adopted the no land use change for industrial, so just wanted to put that in as well, but. So he went ahead and changed the land use and the zoning from industrial to residential so he could build townhomes. He did, and we designed a townhome project and got the townhome approved by Pinellas County. So the site plan for townhomes, 16 units, was approved 2006, 2005, 2006. So I would like to place this right out here. So this site before you, again, I just want to reiterate, was approved by Pinellas County. We had total 16 units, six units on the west side and the rest on the east side. So today, we moved forward several years later, and he had tried very hard to sell this property and was not very successful, so he came up with the good idea, and I think it's a good idea, to provide residential and a neighborhood commercial. Neighborhood commercial, it means it's a very low-profile retail for the neighborhood where the neighbors can actually walk from their homes with their kids to maybe get an ice cream, cone of ice cream, or maybe get a, go to a beauty salon, get their nails done. This is not going to be a 7-Eleven. It's not going to be, you know, a very heavily used commercial property. It is going to be a mixed use. That is something that you folks have always been pushing for, that will reduce the traffic. People can actually, these folks from Pine, from Forest Ridge, will be able to walk to this shop, to these shops, and maybe have their kids with their bikes come and visit. So, so from a, from a big picture, and I stand on this side of the fence, but I am also looking at really a wonderful use of the property, and I scratch my head, I'm thinking, why would the neighborhood be opposing something like this? At the LPA meeting, I don't know if it was LPA or P&amp;Z meeting, you know, they were talking about some other uses that were around here that. You know, they were talking about some other uses that were around here that, you know, were not, you know, you, uh, the buildings were vacant and not in use. All right, well, we can't help that, you know, I mean, that's marketing. But, uh, it just didn't really make a whole lot of sense. Now, I know also, uh, Commissioner Seal had made a reference to a signage. And, um, if that helps the neighborhood, I'm willing to go on a limb. Now, the owner's out of the country, he's not here, he wished he would be here, he'll be here next week. I'm going on a limb to say that we will leave that signage alone.
You will leave the sign in place?
Yes, we'll leave it alone and we'll build around it. Okay. So, um, now, as far as access, again, you know, we talked about access. This, the site plan was approved years back, so I'm just thinking if there was an issue, um, it would have came out then. Or if it is an issue today, that's a legal thing and we can address that legally with the neighborhood. But what's before you today is really just, you know, zoning change. That's all we're doing today. We have shared or planned with the neighborhood, I have emailed it to them, maybe that creates questions, maybe I shouldn't have done that. But I wanted to be frank with everybody to say that, listen, this is, this is the overall intent of this project. It may not be what you're seeing, but it's going to be very close to it. So the six units on the west side, we figured, all right, let's leave that alone. And let's come up with a, a line in here that could separate the two. So we figured, all right, let's draw up a line in here, dedicate this portion to the townhomes and the residential as, as they have already been approved. And then do the neighborhood low-profile commercial mixed use on this side. And we'll use the very same access, we don't, doesn't make sense to have two access points. So this access that was previously approved by this Pinellas County will be utilized. And again, this is all, you know, conceptual design, but what's before you today is merely zoning and land use. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Jewell.
So with the diagram that you have there.
Yes.
The, if you were to put a strip center in there, it would be facing Wooddove Avenue?
Um, I have a conceptual sketch and it just didn't come out too well this morning. This is the plan that I had shared with the neighborhood, and these are the townhomes that you had seen before. All right, the previous one showed seven units, I'm sorry, this one shows six, so I, I made a mistake there. The previously approved plan showed seven units, now we're showing six. But, um, the, the majority of the building would be set back as far to the south as possible. And of course, this part of it would be altered on nineteen. So, um, it's kind of subjective to say where it's really facing. It's, you know, it's supposed to be, uh, visible from nineteen, Alt nineteen, but it's set back from, um, Wooddove Avenue. I'm going to say it's probably a hundred feet, a hundred feet setback from this property line, right-of-way line. And over here is probably twenty-five feet, as it gets closer to Alt nineteen.
Any further question?
Now, Hush, thank you for, uh, your presentation. I, to answer your rhetorical question about why would they have a problem with it, well, I don't know how many, when that development was built or how many people have moved in since this property was rezoned to residential.
Right.
But you go into buying a home kind of with your eyes open to look around to see what's there. So they have expectations, that's one reason people might have a problem. The other is the traffic issue that I brought up earlier. From fifty-nine is the traffic count to over a, over a thousand for, for a commercial use. So those are some of the reasons, and I just thought I'd just ask your comment on, on this access issue. Because you might have gotten an access legally on that previously approved plan.
Right.
But it was also residential then. So, uh, again, you might have had the owner's approval of access. Do you have any thoughts about the access over top of the right-of-way ease, uh, the drainage easement that F D O T owns?
Let me answer that question, but let me, let me go back just a little bit. When this land was industrial, they could have put access anywhere, right? When it was I L.
I don't know.
You know?
I don't know who owned that.
So, so whether, yes, so, but, but, but to move forward and answer your question. If D O T allows access points that would be close to, to this road, it would have to be probably something like this. And, and this easement, I think, was dedicated to the homeowners association so that the retention pond could address the roadway. So this retention pond is designed and built to take the roadway drainage into the count.
Looked more like a drainage easement as opposed to a retention.
It's a retention pond.
It is.
Yes, it's a retention pond, it takes the drainage, it takes the water and it does what it's supposed to do and discharges.
So crossing over top of it would be problematic as well?
We could cross it, but we would have to mitigate the volume that would be removed based on that construction. In other words, if we put this driveway on there and take out, let's say, a thousand cubic feet of volume, then we would have to give another thousand cubic feet of volume on this property.
Oh, you're talking about, uh, drainage?
Yes, so, so the volume is, should be maintained.
Okay, that's all I have for now, thanks.
And if that's approvable by D O T, we could consider it.
Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, Madam Chair, good morning, Hush.
Good morning.
You, you mentioned the site plan was approved, what, what year was that approved?
Uh, it was two thousand, uh, this, this is two thousand six, so I'm going to say two thousand six.
And what prevented the development from moving forward as a residential's development?
I think it was the economy at the time. And, uh, he actually moved forward with construction to a point where he took trees out, but he had to put a halt on the project.
And the land use change that preceded that was in anticipation of this residential development?
Uh, yes, we changed the land use and the zoning from I L to build the townhomes. And townhomes seem to be pretty good, but somehow nobody wants to move here.
And so you got in right before we prioritize industrial limited?
Yes, yes.
All right, thank you.
If it was after that, it wouldn't have happened.
It would not have, thank you.
Anyone else at this point? Okay, um, we will go ahead and hear the rest of the proponents and then we will move to the opponents. Um, Patricia, um, Rogial? Is Patricia here?
She's opposed.
Are you opposed? Okay, uh, Michael Marshall, are you opposed? Okay, got some mistakes. Uh, Gary Bootcher, are you for or opposed? Gary, are you for or against?
Uh, Tom, uh, the wrong case number, I'm sorry.
Wrong case, wrong case number.
Wrong case number, okay. All right, we'll see if we can correct that. Okay, so we will move on to the opponents. I do want to, I understand Susan Glensky, you are opposed?
Opposed, yes.
Okay. Um, so, Mr. Pressman has requested ten minutes as a group speaker. And cards that, um, support this are Susan Glensky, Richard Knollitt, Evelyn Molina and Jorge Molina. And you all are waiving your time to Mr. Pressman, correct?
Well, there are other cards there, right?
Yeah, I have cards here that you are waiving your time, Mr. Pressman listed you as waiving your time to speak.
I also put a card in there to waive my time as well.
And you are?
Jennifer King.
We will get you later. Okay. We have a lot of cards that are opposed, so we will be calling them up individually after Mr. Pressman presents for ten minutes. Okay, thank you, Mr. Pressman.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Mr. Administrator Todd Pressman, um, two hundred Second Avenue South in St. Petersburg. I'm honored to be representing the Forest Ridge HOA, uh, which is in opposition to this case. If I could ask on the camera if we could stay on the overhead as I flick through some pages for you, if I may. The site, you've been well oriented, is up close north to Tarpon Springs. Uh, this is the orientation, this is the Forest Ridge community here. The rezoned area is here, this is Alt nineteen, and this is that Wooddove Avenue, which is the entrance into the Ford Ridge, Forest Ridge community. What's proposed for you is nine townhomes here, rezoning this to commercial, nine townhomes is not part of the rezoning. And again, this is Wooddove Avenue, which is the access into the subdivision. The plan you saw that's proposed is commercial here and townhomes here. Um, I, I would say to you, when you look at a zoning map, it looks somewhat conducive. But when you look a lot closer, there's one tremendously unique and ultimately differing component that all the other commercial properties in the immediate area, that creates a completely different scenario. And some of the commissioners or the commission discussion has worked towards that. So, right now, the plan is their only access is on Wooddove, Wooddove Avenue. Uh, there's an easement, uh, there's an F D O T requirement, it's very close to this intersection. It's going to be a lot of bureaucracy, in my layman's opinion, of traffic engineering and such. They can't get access there, particularly over the drainage easement as well. So the access for the plan presented before you and that's in the file is access here. So what they'll be doing is dumping a huge amount of requested commercial traffic on a small local road. It's the only commercial parcel in that area that accesses a private road versus being right on alternate nineteen. That's a major and tremendous difference for this property. The local road is substandard by width, in terms of shoulders and in terms of other elements. Most likely, haven't done a boring, but most likely talked to some of the county staff, it was not constructed for commercial. That we don't know for sure, but that's, that's a good guess. Uh, we believe it does not allow for emergency vehicle clear, vehicle clearance. And we, uh, the roadway that Wooddove is constrained due to a subdivision called Box. Let me show you how that is working. So subdivision is here, Alt nineteen. This would be the access to the project and the access to the subdivision. There's a call box located here where cars will pull up, they will then push the button. Sometimes it takes a lot to manipulate those buttons and get those calls through. Call your person you're visiting, wait for them to answer the phone, sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. And you're waiting, waiting, waiting to gain access to a gate, closed gate, which is located here, it's restricted entry gate. So looking on the street level, this is the access under Wooddove, you see this is the call box here. This is the subject property is located here. And this is, uh, an element of backing up vehicles. You can also see here how tight this is. There's not a lot of room to come around. Particularly, that brings up concerns about truck traffic, which would be generated by a commercial project. Emergency vehicles, minimum clear zone on a stabilized area, as I understand and talk to the staff, is twenty feet. It's required for access under NFPA one fire prevention code. And then we have delivery vehicles. So if we have just a little holdup in that call box, we're concerned, actually tremendously concerned about emergency vehicles, delivery vehicles and truck traffic. There was a discussion about what is the degree of impact of the requested commercial traffic? Staff has told you, nine townhome units generate fifty-nine project trips. So we find that, I had the number nine seventy-nine, it's very close to what was discussed with the commission. That's about sixteen point five times the traffic generated by townhomes. Put onto a local road, shared with two hundred and fifty-six homes, which is substandard as we understand it and constrained by a call box. In terms of peak hour trips on that generation, townhomes would have, uh, five P M peak hour trips. The commercial would have eighty-five P M peak hour trips per I T E. That's seventeen times of an increase on peak hour traffic accessing Wooddove Road. I'm going to pull up a different piece on that, but what I will tell you is, under your criteria, under your specific criteria for level two and level three applications, is that there's no impact traffic-wise into surrounding area. And, uh, there are a couple of future land use elements. One point one, point two is that, uh, changes should avoid commercial intrusion impacts into established neighborhoods and achieve compatibility with traffic movement objectives. In summary, it is the commercial impacts that are opposed. Uh, the L P A was not able to pass a motion, so it was the denial motion coming to you three to three. I'd like to ask, there are a lot of residents there, if I may ask all the residents of Woodridge who are here, if you would stand up for a moment, please? And we have some petitions, you received a lot of petitions and you received a lot of, um, emails as well, I believe. So we believe that it will be overwhelming onto the local roadway. We believe that will be, um, pretty much disastrous for the subdivision. And we also believe, uh, looking just at the daily trips and peak hour trips, it will be constrained, little access road. And, um, bear with me one second here. Here it is. I want to show that one slide that for some reason didn't print. Here it is. This is the criteria, if you could zoom in on that, please. This is criteria for type two and type three uses. C, under your criteria, is etiquette, drives, walkways and parking available or proposed so that there are no vehicular circulation or parking problems created. And D, the proposed use will not create excessive vehicular traffic or other traffic problems. Those are the specific criteria, A through F, we believe they don't meet C or D, certainly not D. So finishing summary is that this site is separated by its locational topographical elements from all the other commercial properties in the immediate area, accessing not on Alt nineteen. And that, we've shown you that this is opposed almost unanimously by the neighborhood and the board, uh, their HOA board, which provided a resolution, and by your L P A board. We'll be happy answering any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Pressman? Yes, Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Todd, you might want to let your folks sit down.
Oh.
Thank you, Commissioner Welch. They might get tired of standing.
Maybe I got a standing ovation.
Oh, yeah.
I didn't hear it.
I didn't either.
So you're, um, so it's a homeowners association, do they speak for that neighborhood?
They are, yeah.
So is there consensus that if it was developed as is, as residential, that there would be no issue with access from Wooddove?
Well, certainly some is going to go there, uh, I think residential would be the best option. It's going to be very low trips, uh, but you can ask some of the residents as they come up.
Well, I'm just wondering who speaks, since it's a private road, who speaks for, you know, those additional impacts or access from Wooddove if it is residential development there? Or does that old site plan approve it?
I'm sorry?
Or does the old site plan that Hush talked about already approve?
What's in the file and what's proposed is access on Wooddove, if I'm answering your question. I, I am representing the HOA and the citizens directly.
So my question is, if it goes, if we deny this and it stays residential.
Yeah.
The new development there would have access from Wooddove, that's not an issue or is it an issue?
There's been a lot of discussion with it. I'm not a lawyer, as you know, it appears that they, well, first of all, they have to have access from somewhere. So right now, it's being forced on the Wooddove. So whatever would be the lesser, my answer to you, whatever would be the least impacting is where we'd like to see it go, which obviously be residential.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Pressman?
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Commissioners and Administrators.
Thank you. Adele Blackman, now we're calling up the cards of everybody who signed in to speak individually for three minutes.
Can I go first because I'm going to present you with the petitions?
Yes, I need to do this first.
Who is it?
And you are?
I am Amy Abdallah, I'm the president of the HOA.
Okay, thank you, Amy.
Okay, um, I have the resolution that was.
I have the resolution that was unanimous vote by the board to oppose this. And I also have signatures of over 230 residents of the neighborhood. We have 256 homes in the neighborhood. And some of them are out of town, so unfortunately, not everybody could sign. More than 31 years ago, three signs were erected for Forest Ridge. At the time, all of them were on the developers' land. Somewhere along the line, one of the developers went bankrupt, and this one parcel was sold. But we maintained this for over 31 years. At no time did anyone ever say that one of our signs would have to be taken down. We had water, electricity, we planted, mowed, everything. When the current owner purchased the land, it was zoned for townhomes. The prior owner had talked to us about, well, talked to a prior board, about being part of the gated community. We would move the gate out, and they would put a wall around it, and it would be part of our community, where they would, you know, pay HOA fees and help with the maintenance. Somewhere along the line, that owner, he sold to the current owner, who for some reason wants to make a commercial now. I guess that must be more profitable. Right now, I don't know if you want to put this on. This is the plan that Hooch gave us. But right now, there's 400 feet between the keypad.
Do you see the seal that if you move your petitions and see where the seal is?
Oh, I'm sorry. I put it in the wrong place.
Nope.
Okay.
Just as you're looking at it, we will see it.
Oh, okay.
So if you want it, there we go. Thank you.
It's over 400 feet from the keypad to the gate currently. This is where, you know, they were going to build a wall around it, and we would have moved the gate out. We, you know, makes a lot more sense this way. They just did a short, you know, they just did a shortcut during the original development, so they didn't have to put up the wall until this was developed. Right now, we have people stopping here to make calls. Other people zoom around. It's already dangerous to do this. I can't imagine, if somebody needs a cup of coffee really bad, what's going to happen? But you see, they come down here and they go in front of townhomes. I don't know who's going to want a townhome where you're going to have somebody coming into a parking lot and them looking out over a strip mall in a parking lot. That just doesn't make sense. But we've already got a confusing entryway, and it'll be more and more confusing with strip mall and, you know, our residents going in there at the same time. This is where the sign is. I'm not sure exactly how they'll move the strip mall around the sign. But we also have the fire trucks, the first responders, EMS, the police. They have to stop it here to use the knockbox to gain entry. So if there's a backup here, when seconds count, that's going to be hard on our community. Okay. There's commercial space all around. We admit that. But what you don't see, Mr. Bailey pointed at the auto repair place across the street with the cars in front of it. It's been out of business for almost a year now, because I used to take my car over there. There are a strip mall right next door with seven empty stores, including the anchor store. Okay, I'm about out of time.
You're over your three minutes. If you could conclude, please? Because otherwise, if you're going to speak for 10, then I have to have five people who waived their time for you.
Oh, no, wait. Thank you. I only need about another minute. Okay. This doesn't even include all the spaces that are empty in Tarpon. Okay. You might want to say, is this area blighted? Or is the zoning just not working? We think the zoning's not working. We've got a lot of people moving into this area. Houses are selling very quickly. Our property values have come up quite a bit in the last couple of years. I want you to consider, you know, what this zoning change is going to do for our little, small community. We can't support a strip mall. 256 houses will not support a strip mall. We're not supporting the strip mall next door, which has, you know, a huge, you know, number of houses in Pasco County closer to it. And it's not being supported. There's just not enough business. Okay. So, you know, I'm hoping you'll take all this into consideration. Otherwise, I have a feeling we'll be down here in a few months asking for our property to be devalued. And I was told it could be devalued by as much as 30% with this change coming in. Nobody's going to want to buy a house in a gated community that you're sharing a private road with a commercial, vehicles, and everything else. So, I sincerely hope you'll take our community into account when you do this.
Thank you. And if you wish to give the petitions over to Jeanette, please? Then they'll be passed. Thank you for speaking. Adele Blackman?
Finish.
And then thereafter Evelyn Chambers and then Jennifer Kane. Okay. No, you can still speak. She didn't go over too much time.
There's two people that have given their time to me, if I need it. But I was going to start completely different. But after that Hooch guy spoke, I feel I have to say, the application was wrong. The man bought it February the 2nd, 2006. He bought it from, were two owners that were going to build townhouses, but then they didn't. They had had it rezoned. He didn't rezon it. He's had it for 13 years. And 12 of the 13 years, it's been up for sale. He's never done a thing to the property. He's never talked to one homeowner. He's never talked to the HOA. He doesn't care whether we exist or not. This is our private road. I'm just horrified over it. I just have to tell you, I'm horrified. I bought in a quiet gated community up in Upper Tarpon. Except it's unincorporated. Any of you know me, I love unincorporated. And I won't buy anywhere else for my own living. And this is just, I mean, we were in shock. I'm the one that found the sign. The sign wasn't put out properly. It was way down in weeds in front of a tree. I happened, my eyes are pretty good. I caught a little glimmer of yellow. And that was in October. We had no knowledge of the September. In October, we went in, and there were only a few of us, and nobody knew what to say. And because of that, you know, it was 3 to 3. But I spoke my heart, just like I'm speaking my heart today. I just, I can't believe that this would be happening to us. They can say all this stuff about industrial, but it was originally part of the neighborhood. And as so, it should be finished out in homes. The first, the Anwar Construction was the first builder. And he went bankrupt. And he never built, I mean, in the back, it was totally no roads, no nothing. It was just sand and trees. And he sold that lot to a couple, their last name is Bennett. They bought it in 1991. The second builder, who built my home, Larson Communities, and I'd been there 16 and a half years. And Larson Communities came in in, oh, no, no, 93. Okay. He started working in 93. This couple owned it from 91 to 2004. In 2002, Larson Communities was done with the neighborhood. He couldn't do anything to that property because this couple owned it. And so he left and went to Trinity to finish up. And this is how this property has become such a mess. And when I moved in, it was all woods, totally woods. The second owner in '04 destroyed, as far as I'm concerned. That was the most beautiful entrance that I can imagine going into a neighborhood. And that was one of the key factors. I'm in real estate, and of course, I go by figures and stuff, and I definitely check what's the neighborhood like. And, but, that was an emotional factor to me, to go in such a beautiful neighborhood with the gates. And the gates, we were told several times by the people, the gate company that fixes the gates all the time, we have an electrical problem because it's too far. And they told us, and the HOA finally decided this year, oh, yeah, okay, we're going to get the funds up, and we're going to move the gates forward just in front of the island. And then this came up. And they said that, you know, it would look bad if we did it at this point. It looked like we were doing it for that reason, which that wasn't the reason. And then there's a property owned by Freddie Risk, only he died, and we're getting that. And that's the woods area in the subdivision. But I guess that's about all I have to say. I just don't understand. This man bought the property, no due diligence at all, obviously. Because he would have already seen problems with it. And why, all of a sudden, he wants commercial? I think he just wants to sell it. I don't know what the deal is. But please, don't let our neighborhood be ruined by this kind of zoning. It has to be residential, or we're going to lose everything we've got. And I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Adele.
Thank you.
Evelyn Chambers?
I gave my message to Mr. Todd Pressman.
Okay.
So, I just purchased the property about three months ago. I'm a single mom. And the property was beautiful, and it's peaceful. It's calm. The wildlife back there is awesome. I can sit on my couch and watch the birds. We have red hawks, the storks. And with all this commercial, you're going to kill them. They're going to go away. Not to mention, if anybody's driven on Alt. 19 in rush hour, you know, it's not even really rush hour. It's 5 o'clock, 4 o'clock, 3 o'clock. There's always so much traffic. And now, we're going to try to fight to get into my house? It just doesn't make any sense. If you widen the road, maybe, you know, in the future, if you widen the road and make it so there'll be traffic flowing a lot easier. But having a strip mall, townhomes, you're going to have sanitation. You're going to have more mice and rats and all that lovely stuff that, you know, you don't want around your house. You're going to have theft, because, you know, strip malls are, you know, a common area where people like to try to go rob places. So you're going to bring in a lot of unwanted in that neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Barbara Gabriel? Next is, after Barbara, is Martin Eglin?
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. I have been in Forest Ridge since 2000. We built here, my mom and I built that house. And this was her last hurrah. She wanted to live there until she died, and she did. And it was a beautiful neighborhood. And it still is. It still is. We have a lot of kids in that neighborhood. And we have the gates. And you don't get to worry about them, too. School buses in the back, you know. But we have the little ones around the front. But my main thing was the property value. Over the years, we've had a lot of problems with the unincorporated area and different homes. We had the Stafford plant to worry about years ago. And, you know, we got a lot of riffraff from it. Our property values went down. Now we're getting it up again. And it will drop 20 to 30% if they come in. The strip mall on the other side is a mess. And you get a lot of homeless. Soon as he starts to build this, I don't know if you know, but he's going to be encroaching on the ones that are back there in the tents on alternate 19 before you get down to Dixie Highway. And that's all we need, is another mess in there. They have no place to go. Now you have people coming in like that. You have to worry about your children up in the front, you know, riding their little bikes and whatnot. But I don't want to see it happen. I love it. I don't think it's right that you put a strip mall in that would be empty. If he did his due diligence, he would have had it already rented these places. So we would have known what's coming in there. And he didn't do any of that. So we don't know what's coming in there. I doubt the ice cream place, really. So, and the other gentleman said, like, we're going to walk from our homes to go to the strip mall? Come on. In this day and age, you're not going to do it. We're going to use our cars. So that's going to mean more traffic in and out. So I am against it. Definitely against it. I want my home the way it is. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Martin Eglin? And after Martin, it looks like Bonnie Carroll?
I'm just going to use Amy's diagram because that really shows pretty much everything that's going to happen. Want to have?
Seal.
Back?
There you go.
Got it. Just want to, before we start or before you take your vote, just think about if you lived there. You bought your home. I bought my home a year ago, my wife and I. We moved in. We loved it. We love the community. We love the gated community. We love the bushes that were out front that we were told had to go. Or the town or our board was told had to be removed. So now, that fence is wide open. It used to be bushes. It's going to cost us a lot of money to replace the bushes with a fence, a brick wall, or some kind of, or even bushes that would be acceptable to the board or to the town. We were told that we had to remove it. So, we were good neighbors. We removed it. And we're still looking at it. And now, we're looking at a mess as we drive into our community. Think about what's going to happen, again, as everybody said, during rush hour. We're going to need some kind of light to get out of the community. There's no light there now. And there are occasions where you have to wait to make a left turn out of the community. And then coming back in to make a left turn from 19, or alternate 19, to make a turn into our community, we're going to have to wait. There's going to be just too much traffic that we're not going to be able to get in. So something else has to be done. And again, before I close, I want you to think about if you lived there. Would you want this there? Would you want your kids to be there? And we're not going to go to that store. We have Publix. We have Walmart within five minutes of us. Why would we go to a strip mall to get a loaf of bread or even ice cream? We wouldn't. And I don't think any of you would either. So, again, that strip mall is going to be emptied, and it's going to be an eyesore. Our property values will go down, and we're going to demand to have our taxes reduced. So whatever you gain with the taxes for this empty strip mall and six houses, you're going to lose by the property value. So with that, I thank you, and have a good afternoon.
Thank you. Bonnie Carroll and then Larry Carroll? Do you wish to speak? Bonnie? Okay. Patricia Rogio? Okay. Michael Marshall? Come on up, if you wish to speak. Okay. But these cards are all in opposition, just so you all know. Now, is there anybody else who wishes to speak against this item before I turn it back over to the applicant? Yes, come forward, if you wish to speak.
First of all, I thank the Commissioners for taking the time to go out to our community. And I appreciate everything that's been said. I think I don't want to milk it.
And you are Michael Marshall, right?
Yes, I'm Michael Marshall. I live in Woodhaven Street is where I live, in Tarpon, in Forest Ridge. Anyway, there are two other rooms that are standing room only, basically, in opposition. So I think my wife and I went out to gather up signatures. And all we heard was, people say, well, can I sign? Can my wife sign? How many signatures? Everybody, not one was for this. Not one. And I just would suggest to you all, if it was your community, and right in front is this strip mall, I just don't see it. I thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Again, is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition? Yes, come on forward and... Hi, if you could identify yourself, please?
I'm Bonnie Carroll.
Okay.
And I only want to say one thing, is that in order for him to use his property, he's going to have to access Wooddove. So if he wants to put something there, he should do something that's going to be agreeable to the people, which is the townhomes, not, you know, the strip mall. So it would make it a lot easier if we all agreed in together.
Thank you very much. Okay, again, does anybody else wish to speak in opposition? Okay, then, how many minutes, Commissioner Gerard, does the applicant have? Who's Gobah?
How many did you have? Started with 20?
I started with 20.
It was 16 or 17.
Okay. Who's?
Probably has three or four.
Well, I didn't, I cut it off when we started asking questions.
Yes, it's getting close to afternoon. What I mostly heard was traffic. That's really, basically, mostly what I heard. So... And just to reiterate, I was the one that came before this board and rezoned it from industrial to residential. I was here, myself, 2006. So I just want to put it out there. And the very same owner has owned the property since. Now, he could have given it to his wife or something, but it's the same family. They're together. They're just not able to be here today. So nevertheless, I'd like to go back to what Commissioner Egger was sort of alluding to earlier with access possibly off of Alt 19. Now, if we are able to leave this access for these six townhomes, and if the owners are in agreement to that, so what we could do is have this property basically closed off and maybe put a wall in here. And we would have to work with the association. We would have to see, and hopefully, they will give us, because this easement has been given to them for their retention pond. So what I'm sort of thinking is if they are in agreement to allow us to relocate that pond and give the pond, bring it back to its original volume requirements on this property, we may have to increase the size of the easement. I know there's signage in here, and we'll keep that. But somehow, by taking this area away from the pond, we would have to recreate it somewhere else on this property. So if the HOA slash the neighbors are okay with allowing us to vacate that portion of the easement, relocating the pond, and granting them additional easement for the volume, and if DOT is okay with that, and that's something that we would have to discuss with them, then I think we could go ahead and put this access as per Commissioner Egger's request. I think that would work. And we will totally disconnect the retail from the Wooddove Avenue. I think that's a good solution to their concern. I don't know if Commissioner Egger's okay with that, as far as...
Like, I keep being reminded by everybody, we don't do site plan work here. So all I am just, all I am looking at is just the zoning issue.
Yes, but it's access.
I understand. I brought it up, but I'm just saying to you, it's just, you know, I've got to revert back to what my job today is, which is just the zoning thing. I think there's a lot of issues to work out, personally. But, so anyway, just reminding myself, not you.
Yes, and I appreciate that. So anyhow, we're trying to work things out here today with you and giving to the neighborhood some sort of comfort feeling that we're willing to take that access. And you can make that a condition of your approval, if you choose to approve, to have access for the townhomes off of Wooddove and the access for the retail to be off of Alt 19. And then, we'll just have to work out the details. I don't know if legally, that's acceptable by your team or not.
Any questions for Mr. Gobah? Commissioner?
So I kind of alluded to it earlier, you know, why not just build residential there? You know, under the current zoning? And you mentioned the economy, but now, the economy is, you know, doing very well, and there's a demand for housing. So why not just do the residential?
That's very true. You're absolutely correct, Commissioner. And we're working on a lot of townhomes. But apparently, in dislocation, townhome is not the most favorable use. He hasn't been able to work anything out with any real estate companies to sell the property. So he's coming up with an alternate solution.
So he wants to sell it, not own it and develop it?
Absolutely, yeah. He wants to, he prefers to sell it. I mean, if somebody comes and buys it, he'll sell it. I think he's had it for so long, he's just tired of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Did you? I'm sorry, Commissioner Egger. Okay, I am going to close the public hearing at this point. Commissioner Eggers?
I have a motion when you're ready for that.
Motion what?
I have a motion when you're ready.
I'm ready.
Okay. Because of the privacy issues of the road, because of the traffic that is going to be, I think, very extremely impactful, because of the comp plan reference earlier, because of the fact that, you know, I think there is an opportunity to deal with the neighbors, and I think that work still needs to be done. And I am a commercial realtor, and I can't imagine a plan that turns a retail center away from Alt 19, and it would be successful. I know I heard you say at the end there that you might turn it back around the other way, which would make sense. I just think there's a lot of work to be done. So I'm going to recommend denial of the request.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Eggers, and a second by Commissioner Gerard. I believe that Commissioner Eggers, you stated exactly how I feel about it.
Madam Chair, I think at some point, I'd really like to have another conversation about how we do these kind of issues and bifurcating the land use decision versus the zoning decision.
Correct.
Especially with the state regulations that are upon us on the zoning decision. So I think it would make it cleaner. I think it would make it simpler for the applicant, as well as for the commission, in making its decisions.
Yeah. I second that request. I've been asking for it for four years. So, yeah, I think it's a great time to...
I think there's...
We've already embarked on talking about it, but we need to probably address it further.
Absolutely. There's been times when it's been pretty straightforward, but then, issues like this, where this would be a very different discussion that we'd be having today if it was separated into two separate decisions, so...
Okay. So we are ready for the voting cards.
So if we wanted to deny it, we vote yes?
Denial is a yes.
You want to deny, vote yes. Thank you. Thank you all for being here today, for both sides. You know, if this does happen to come back again, I think that it's stated that there is enough public concern for issues that would need to be addressed. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we are moving on to Agenda Item 14.
Agenda Item 14 is case number L U D M P-18-10-19. This is an application of Taylor Morrison of Florida Incorporated for a land use change from residential suburban and transportation utility overlay to residential low and transportation utility overlay, and the establishment of a development master plan. The public hearing was properly advertised. The affidavit of publication has been received for filing. Nine letters in opposition to the application have been received. The matter is properly before the board to be heard.
Okay, we have both proponents and opponents, so we will need a staff presentation.
Good morning. Michael Schotterbach, Planning Department. This is a request, two parts. It's a future land use amendment request, and also a request to establish a development master plan for residential plan development zone parcel. It's approximately nine and a half acres. It's currently vacant. It's located at the southwest corner of Belcher Road and Alderman Road in Palm Harbor. They're requesting a future land use amendment from residential suburban to residential low. Again, the zoning is residential plan development, no change to that. And the applicant also wishes to establish a development master plan for a 30-unit, single-family detached subdivision. The development master plan, it's a requirement in the RPD zoning district. RPD allows for more flexibility, wide range of housing types and design parameters, establishes what housing can go there, setbacks, building heights, lot sizes, dimensions, access points, internal drive aisles, and areas of open space. You can see the subject property here, rectangular shape, outlined in red. Alderman Road here on the north side. Belcher here on the east side. US 19, further off to the east. Again, the property is vacant. As we go around, adjacent to the property, so across Belcher Road, there's two subdivisions. There's Orange Point, Beacon Groves, this large area subdivision, all zoned R3, single-family residential. To the south and southwest is West Lake Village, subdivision, zoned RPD. Directly to the west is eight homes. These are zoned residential agriculture. And to the north is area, it's all residential agriculture, all single-family residential. Directly north of the property, across Alderman Road, is vacant. Off to the northeast is a Duke Energy substation. And then beyond that is a single-family attached Villas community. You can see the land use and zoning here. On the left is the residential suburban land use. And on the right is the residential low. The area in green is residential rural. The areas that they're requesting to go to residential low, this color, it's similar to the development patterns to the south and to the east. And then, the dark blue area represents a Duke Energy Utility, Transportation Utility area. And then, off to the northeast is higher density. Those are the areas of the Villas. It's also Alderman Road and Belcher Road are scenic non-commercial corridors as well. So an aerial view, looking southwest at the property. This is Belcher Road here and Alderman Road here. You can see it's vacant. Mostly overgrown in the area here. Right along Belcher Road, there is an 80-foot-wide Duke Energy Utility easement that runs along the property. That's why it's clear here. And there is a transportation utility overlay on that that's not going to change. This is looking north along Belcher Road, up towards the intersection with Alderman, and looking south at the site across the street of Alderman Road. And another shot, looking west at the side, at the intersection there of Belcher and Alderman. Here's the development master plan. I have it turned on its side, so you can see Alderman on the north, Belcher on this side. Some of the points of this is they're requesting single-family detached. They're requesting a maximum of 30 units, which comes out to about 3.7 units per acre. The residential low allows five units an acre, but they're restricting it to this 3.7. Maximum building heights of 45 feet. Setbacks for individual lots of 20 feet on the front, 20 feet on the rear, and five feet on each side with a 10-foot building separation. This is in addition to any other buffering requirements along the subdivision. Both roadways, again, being scenic corridors, will require additional buffering.
Question?
Yes.
On those, that master plan stuff that you're talking about right there?
Yes.
The, under the, that's what they're, that's what they're hoping for.
This is the proposal, yes.
Correct. So what would similar numbers be under the current?
The current density is 24, allows for 24 units.
Right. And the building heights?
Again, that would, somebody came in under today's, they would require to go through the master plan, because it's RPD. So with that flexibility, they could request similar heights, setbacks.
Oh, so everything else would be probably the same?
Just at the density is the difference.
I had gotten that 3.7 was closer to three, but I, so I just want to make sure that that number's right on the number of units. But go ahead, I'm sorry. Thank you for...
And this is a plan you actually get to look at.
Okay, thanks.
So the area in blue is where they're proposing the lots to be entrance, only one entrance off of Belcher Road and two cul-de-sacs on the end. The area in here is where they have the easement of the Duke Energy. They can't build any structures in there. It can be used partially for stormwater and open space. And the future land use amendment is from residential suburban to residential low is the request. An increase from two and a half units per acre to five units an acre. It's consistent with the countywide plan. Would not require an amendment to the countywide plan map. They already allow five units an acre. And the master plan would limit the development to 30 units or 3.7 units per acre. And the residential low is consistent with the surrounding developed densities. So we find that the proposed amendments and the master plan are appropriate. It's consistent with the RPD district. It's keeping with traditional RPD patterns. In the area, similar residential development, consistent with the comp plan and the countywide plan. And it's consistent with the arscenic non-commercial corridor policies. Specifically, the arscenic corridor policy. We don't want to see anything higher than five units an acre. So the RL is the maximum we would potentially see on a scenic corridor. And staff recommends approval. And LPA recommended denial with a five-to-one vote. And I'll answer any questions you have.
And their denial was based on?
The smaller lot sizes that are being proposed by the master plan. They did not like that smaller packed-in density. So the increase to 30 units with the smaller lot sizes, that was what came out of the LPAs.
Okay. Yes. Commissioner Eggers?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. Just a couple of questions. What's the dimensions of that property? Do you know? The length, north, south?
About 940 feet from north to south. And it's about 400 feet, a little over 400 feet wide, east-west.
Okay, thank you. Traffic rated on Belcher, it can accommodate this. Any concerns from the traffic perspective on the closeness to the intersection there? I mean, I see that road, when you get, the good news is you're far enough away from the intersection. The bad news is, is once you get through that light, you've really picked up speed with three football fields. I mean, you're ready, you're ready to move. So, and the other question on that same lines is, are they going to have north and south access to that property?
The, where the proposed access is, that's right where, if I can go back to the aerial here and see. There is a median opening. You can see here, there's currently a median opening into the property. And there's a median opening on Belcher Road. That's where they're proposing the access to be. So potentially, I don't know if they could do a left turn out. Didn't hear any discussion otherwise at any of our pre-app meetings or our Development View Committee meetings on that.
And just from a traffic perspective, I don't know if anybody here from traffic, but what you don't want to start seeing on Belcher Road is, on a lot of these subdivisions that are being created, the requests for traffic lights. So I just want to make sure that I'm clear that nothing would generate a traffic light requirement here with the additional density that we're giving. Because once people are living there, there's a whole different tone that we get from that person versus the developer who will be gone in short order. So I'd like to have somebody speak... So I'd like to have somebody speak to that.
Yeah, I don't believe there would, it would trip any type of requirement for a light. What they could develop now at 24 units versus the request at 30 units is only an increase in 58 trips.
Right, so you don't see any issues with that tripping a light?
Correct.
A possibility, okay. And then there was a, it looked like there was a dotted, a black dotted line on one of the drawings to the, to the west and then to the north. And I just wondered what that significance was on the.
Sure. This, as you see here, the black dotted line, so this area in green, it's the Alderman Road overlay in our comp plan. It was created in 2006 at the request of the neighbors who live there. And the county commission passed an ordinance creating this overlay, which limits the density in that neighborhood to a half a unit an acre. So any changes, somebody owns property, they could only develop at that half unit an acre. They can't increase. It has comp plan requirements in there for limiting it to more of a rural agriculture area. This property is not included in that, but it's, it is the, just adjacent to a portion of it on the south.
Yeah, the 940-foot-long piece is adjacent to that.
Yeah, it's four lots to the west, yes, sir.
Okay, and so right now, the, the current allowance would be 24 units on there?
Correct.
And with the, the request, with the, is it the master plan, would limit it to 30?
They're, yeah, they're limiting it to 30 is the request, yeah.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have for now, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And I apologize, Commissioner Eggers might have asked this when I was out of the room, but under the current, 24 units, do they have the same setbacks as well as the same height that would be proposed?
It's RPD, so anybody who'd wanted to develop anything on this property to come forward, under today's, with no land use change to do 24 units, they would have to submit for a master plan and come to the board to get that approved.
Okay.
Where they could ask for different setbacks, different height limits, which then the board can, you know, decide on, could limit if, if it looks to be excessive or not compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. But they could ask for similar lot sizes, setbacks, the same, just the density would be different.
And would that then come back to the county commission?
Yes.
That RPD plan?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted it to be known for the public in case they were curious about that.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just wanted to make sure I'm tracking the process here. Do you wear dual hats as the planning staff? Are you the staff or the LPA as well?
Yes.
Okay, so y'all recommended it?
Approval.
This LPA report and the LPA agency?
LPA Board recommended.
Recommended denial because of the 24 versus 30. That was the basis of it?
Yeah, the, the increase in the smaller lot sizes that they're proposing.
Okay. And today you stand as county planning?
Yeah, as, as staff, so we, we, the same staff report, our LPA staff reports in here. We make that to the LPA. The LPA vote's different than staff recommended.
Thank you.
Okay. My understanding that the presenter for this case is Trent Stevenson? Correct? That's what I have down. Are you the presenter for 20 minutes?
I am presenting, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm Robert Williams with Lewis Lawman &amp; Walker.
Oh, okay.
Representing the developer and applicant Taylor Morrison, home of Florida. And, what? Oh, yeah, yeah. And we have a PowerPoint as well. We're going to come up and help with that. Isabel Albert is also going to be presenting also. So I don't know how to get the PowerPoint to where it's on the screen. First, I do want to tell you, thank you to your staff. Always goes, they don't get enough praise, honestly, in my opinion. They don't have a dog in the fight. They're just looking at the items and trying to figure out what's the best thing for the county. And I know they're dedicated and we appreciate their efforts on this. Part of the time also will be given to Isabel Albert, who will help through part of this. She's a planner, so she can speak to those items and things that I really shouldn't as an attorney. So first of all, want to respectfully thank the LPA, but respectfully disagree with their final conclusion on this. But we do adopt the staff report. We think the staff got it right. We think your staff understands what's going on out there and the, and the right, you know, right tenor of this. I do want to address a couple of things. I think that the dwelling units per acre is actually 3.17. So that that was a, yeah, it was here, but it's not there. 3.17, that might have been a typo, so I think, Commissioner Eggers, your math is probably correct on that. But, but also, it's, it's not that big of a, not that big of a change in the greater scheme of things either. Also, that curb cut, it's our understanding, was put in when the road was widened to, you know, to accommodate for this particular development and this unique size of property, so these units can go in there. And Isabel, Ms. Albert, will also talk about the potential for traffic light. Also, the other question on height. The prior site plan approval for 24 units did include a 45-foot height requirement, height limitation on that. And so that's going to be consistent now. That site plan approval was expired. What the, I think the, well, what we would tell you is the most important parts of this to really consider is that we're talking about very minimal changes in the scope of what the project really is. So if you consider the 24 units that had been previously approved, what we're really talking about is an increase of six units. And it's going to increase the set yard setbacks from 10 to 20 feet. That's also, in addition to that 20-foot setback and a rear yard setback, there's also another 10-foot buffering setback that will be adjacent to those homes surrounding, surrounding the project. The, and so you're going to have a 30-foot buffer from the home to, to the lot line of the neighboring properties.
All the way around?
Yes, sir, on the three sides. Belcher's going to be a lot bigger because of that, but you understand that.
Can you show us on the figure 12? What's just?
It was just figure 12.
It's not a problem. We'll, yes, we'll go old school here for a moment. And so with that, this, this first one is also to indicate.
Can you show us where the buffer will be for the neighborhood homes?
Yes, that buffer will be around these sides of it.
Okay.
To the, to the buffering neighborhoods.
So to the west and then to the south?
Yes.
Okay. Very good, thank you.
And there will be a some set off from Alderman Road up there to the north. This, this here, this item here, this particular parcel here, to really highlight and note, this parcel is not a part of the Alderman Overlay District. We're certainly adjacent to it. It's something that we should respect and we will respect. And that's why that extra 10-foot buffer plus the 20-foot rear yard setbacks are put in place there. But it doesn't require the same development standards that overlay does. And it's, my understanding from reading the review or reading the transcript, that was some of the perhaps confusion in front of the LPA of whether it was in or whether it was out. It is definitely not within that overlay community. And so back to the, the items that, that we're talking about here. The lot widths are going to be reduced from 60 feet to 50 feet. So it'd be 50-foot lots in there. And then the side yard setbacks, rather than six foot, will be five-foot side yard setbacks. And that's all contained within this particular item that you have here. Yeah, I can write one up. And so in this site plan down here. And so that's all really displayed right there. The master plan really is, is actually a very elegant use of the property. From when I first looked at it, I'm like, that's very simplistic, but also very elegant. There's going to be the stormwater ponds in the front. Be a very nice attractive look from the front from Belcher. The homes will be buffered from the, the units to the west and also to the south and provide some good use of the property at a, at a reasonable density. On the buffering and screening, there will be a six-foot wall on the northwest and south sides. In addition to that 10-foot buffer, the wall will be within the 10-foot buffer. And there will be no development that will occur within this 80-foot corridor here. That's where the stormwater ponds, the entrances and everything will go along that, that area up there. Taylor Morrison has a partnership with National Wildlife Federation, so there will be a butterfly garden that will be put in place within the development as well. And that's going to be right there. And so that's the property, again, will be accessed via Belcher Road and, and will not be accessed through the neighboring community whatsoever. It'll be strictly off of Belcher Road. What we would tell you today as the applicant is that this request is, in fact, consistent with the comprehensive plan. And Ms. Albert will go into a little greater detail, quite a bit of detail actually, on that. But we also agree with the staff that, in fact, it does comply with, with the comprehensive plan. It is consistent. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Albert.
Thank you. Good morning, thank you very much, Madam Chair, Chairman, Commissioners. Isabel Albert with Genesis Health, 1,000 North Asher Street, Tampa, Florida. I'm here assisting the applicant with this rezoning and land use request. Just going to move forward here. I'd like to clarify that the, the site is 9.45 acres in size. And with the 30 units, it does equate to 3.1 dwelling units per acre. So I just wanted to clarify that. It was closer to 3.17. I believe that's where the 3.7 came from, the staff report. So I just wanted to clarify that. So first of all, unlike the other rezonings, there was two attempts. One was successful, the last one was successful for a plan development, allowing 24 units, side setbacks of six feet, front setbacks of 10 feet and rear of 10. We are proposing a greater rear setback to address the properties to the west. We're reducing the side setback from six to five feet. And that was some of the concerns of the, the hearing we had last month. But unlike the other applications, this request is consistent with the community countywide plan. And that was an important factor that we have to look at. That's the first document that we have to make sure that we comply with. And we comply as it is classified as RLM, which is residential low-medium. And this is a category that you would typically find in areas that are mostly developed with some pockets of infill, which is what I would think of this site as an infill development. Permitted use is reached from residential to office to commercial. The density is 10 units per acre, but being in this utility easement, there is a maximum five dwelling units per acre. And it is located near urban activity centers. We have US-19, which is that red corridor, which is all the commercial. And then there's another corridor, commercial to the west. Looking at the future land use, this is residential suburban. It is the only residential suburban in the area that's surrounded by residential low. This is the five units to the acre that we're requesting. We're requesting to have the same density or the same land use category as this density, but we're not requesting up to five units. We're requesting up to 3.1 units per acre. And that will be controlled by the development master plan. This is since January, any type of residential plan development, it's required to be in association with a residential master plan. And this is to make sure and to give comfort to everybody if what we're proposing is what we're going to be developing. To the south, we are surrounded by RDP, five to the acre. To, then we, staff explained that the R3 on, on the east side. To the north, we have the RDP, which is a more intensive. That's where you have the townhome development, the Duke Energy Transmission, Transmission is there. We have a huge transmission line north and south on the property. And we'll go through that. And then east and west as well, along Belcher Road. So the countywide plan, we have strategies that we need to meet. One of them is the, the future transit corridor. Belcher is identified as a primary corridor. It is a future primary corridor that the vision of the county is looking at. It's also got scenic, non-scenic corridor overlay along the north-south of the property and the east-west property, so we have to make sure that we comply with that. The RLM, as I stated earlier, our areas are usually predominantly developed. We have to recognize that it's a primary corridor. And we also have to be consistent with the countywide plan, what we're proposing. And over here to the, on this, I don't know why I have to touch this, but you'll see that in the countywide plan, there's showing these graphics that shows how you're going to be compatible with the local land use designation with the countywide designation, which we do meet that. Scenic, non-commercial corridor, this is, we have to protect and enhance the scenic corridor. That is a policy 1.10 of the comprehensive plan. This is the view from Alderman Lo, Road, where we have to, we're proposing a six-foot wall there. And then we also have to provide the landscaping here. What you don't see is also the utility lines overhead over here. This is on the west side, on Belcher Road. Here, we have an 80-foot easement corridor with utility lines, which are not shown here, but we have to be setback from that. In addition to be setback from that, we also have to have the landscaping requirement, which is what we're proposing. So this is what we're, we're proposing over here to meet that, that requirement. So we're looking at all this, the request is consistent with the countywide plan, rules and strategies. It is consistent with the Pinellas White, Pinellas County Comprehensive Plan. Staff report found it also consistent. Staff recognizes that it is not part of, of the Alderman Overlay neighborhood. That has been an issue since 2005, when the original owner applied for a rezoning. You're going to hear a lot of stories about it, and I will definitely reserve my time to clarify afterwards. But there was a rezoning first in 2005, another one in 2006. The greatest concern that we heard, and I read all the transcript and I looked at all the staff report and everything, is encroachment. We are afraid, this Alderman community that you saw, their, their biggest concern was the encroachment into their neighborhood. Their biggest concern was the impact to their neighborhood. How is that going to affect us? And you heard that over and over. And then in 2005, when the board denied it, they said, well, we understand you, we hear you. Therefore, we're going to request staff to start looking at, on an overlay to protect you people and to appease those concerns. And so that was going through when the 2006 rezoning came in. 2006 came in with a development order, which was the first time they saw that. And so they felt some comfort with this development order with the 24 units, the, the number of lots, the height, 45 feet, the fence or the wall that we're also complying with. So, but during that time, that developed, that overlay district still was not approved. So there were still the concerns. The applicant, the opposition came and stated the same thing, we have some concerns. But the board felt confident, you know, we have a development order, we're pretty confident with that. Couple months later, that was November when it was approved, in December, that's when the overlay was, was approved. And so this is the first time that we've heard this. With this overlay protection, protects these property owners, protects from the non-encroachment or anything. So we have not been part, we're not part of this, this overlay. But this is what you heard, but the interesting thing is when we went last month to the LPA, again, we heard this encroachment, we heard again these concerns. And then the LPA found that it was not going to be a good fit. They, they found it that the development was too intense and not a good fit. Which kind of baffled me. But if you look at, oh, I'm going backwards, sorry. So here's what we have. I had to look at the density. I could not understand what are they talking about, the concerns with their densities. We are proposing a 3.1 density. To the south, we have 2.5. We have 4.1 to the east, we have 8.1. I mean, this is all around within a half an acre. Within a half an acre, yes, the, the Alderman neighborhood is there, but they only represent 3% of this whole half an acre when you look in terms of units. Here's the site as we, it is today, you see at the corner of Alderman and Belcher. Here's a proposal. You look at it, this is taking a snippet of a neighborhood just across the street to show this is exactly what we're proposing. We're proposing what's all around us. This is the intersection. You look at the Duke Energy, you have an R easement, you have the easement to the north. You have development right on the intersection. Right over here, you have, to the south of this home is the retention pond. It's probably what we're proposing, we, this is my attempt to the retention pond here drawn in. But we're proposing something very similar to what we have right across the street. This is the overhead utility lines that you cannot see in our pretty drawings. But in reality, we have utility lines that we have to work with. This is the intersection. We're talking about six lanes intersection on both roads. What we do not see right prior, Belcher Road has 23,786 vehicles per day. We're proposing an additional 58. So that does, we do not have an impact onto this Belcher Road development. We, because of that and the proximity to the intersection, we cannot have a, a light there, nor are we proposing any. there, nor are we proposing any lights there. This is the access to our site. And there is a curb cut over here that you can see, and that was planned when it was the widening, it was planned and anticipated for this development. So in summary, this is consistent with the Pinellas County Comprehensive Plan. It is compatible with the surrounding development, and we look for seeking approval from the board. Thank you.
Does anyone have, thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, then, how much time does the applicant have remaining?
Three minutes and 38 seconds.
Okay. All right. Very good. Okay. So Mr. Williams and Ms. Albert were the presenters. Trent Stephenson, are you speaking?
I'm with you. I'm just an engineer.
Okay. Gene Qual.
Just, you are an engineer.
Louis Qual.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Almost good afternoon.
Yeah. What's new, right? My name is Louis Qual. I live at 930 Pine Hill Road. I am one of the owners of this property, along with my wife and Beth and Bob Carroll. We bought this property back in the mid-'70s. At that time, there was no Belcher Road, and Alderman Road was a dirt road that went to the dirt road that went to our house. We were pretty much the first people, some of the first people to live up there. We have paid, I'd say several hundred thousand dollars in taxes and insurance on this property over the last 40-some years. Commissioner, I was to answer one of your questions. When this Belcher Road was being put in, Mrs. Carroll and I actually met with county officials to make sure that this cut was put at the appropriate place, and the engineering department made these decisions based on discussions at that time that Belcher and Alderman were going to be there. I have met and talked to the neighbors on both sides of our properties. The Carols and the Quals live in the middle. We each have two or three acres, and then there's two or three acres on the south and north side of us, and we are directly adjacent to this property. The property owner to the south, and I'm under oath, and I'm sure I can tell you that I've talked to him, and he has no objection to this change. I believe, is Roger here? Mr. Carroll has worked with the property owner to the north of us, and they have no objection to this. Let me say that both of these people bought their property after they knew there were going to be at least 24 houses on this property behind us. Now, I've also spoken to two of the four property owners across Pine Hill Road, which is about a 15-foot wide road, and the two of them have assured me that they have no objection to this. I've not talked to the Alomars, and I've not talked to the people at the end of the road. I didn't think the Alomars were home. They may be, but I haven't seen anybody at their house. And they have no objection. So there's a gigantic difference between what was going on last time and what's going on this time. Our street is not part of the overlay. So the property in question is not really adjacent to the overlay. It's adjacent to our 20 acres, 10 acres on each side of Pine Hill Road, which is not part of the overlay, and which at least we know six of the eight people are not objecting to. I want to talk about Taylor Morrison for a minute. Let me say, if you ever want to deal with a company that you can have confidence in, this is that company. They are a $4 billion company on the New York, I don't know if it's the New York Stock Exchange, one of the stock exchanges. They have the wherewithal, the ability to do this project, to do it right. They're not going to do a project that's going to fail. They will not have spent all this time and energy, and you know how these things work. There's a contract, and they do their due diligence, and then they decide if they're going to go forward. They wouldn't, already?
Unless you get some others who can waive time, if you could finish up in about a minute, then we'd be good.
Well, I can tell you that the county people agree with us, and the question that I will leave you with is, I don't know what information was given to the people who are objecting, but just for example, at the LPA, they said we had asked for 55 townhomes. That just is not accurate. We never asked for anything like that. But the only other thing I'd say is, we have our experts, you have your experts. Where are they experts? They're experts. I'll leave you with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Qual. Robert Carroll.
It is good afternoon.
Good morning.
We have worked our way into the afternoon. I hope I do this correctly. I saw this in the other room. Does that make sense?
Right.
Are you all seeing that? I can't, I can't tell.
Yes.
Okay, great. I thought I would use my time, I'm one of the owners, as Lou said, with my wife and Lou and his wife. I thought I'd use my time to give you a little historical perspective and just how bad we are at being property flippers. When we bought our property, which we live in and have lived in since then in the early '70s, this is what our community looked like. This is the early '70s. And you'll notice, I'll have my finger working here, you'll notice that is the property that's in question today. Do you notice something interesting about it? Do you see that it's perfectly white?
Yeah.
And without a single tree on it? Well, we saw that too, and that was intriguing to us. So, this is a close-up, so you have a little better idea. That's what it looked like. There were none of these other people at that time living on the two-acre pieces. There were none of the other people living in the nearby subdivision. It was just Blaine Lacouris, a good friend of ours, who later became Tarpon Springs Mayor and Police Chief. He was in a double-wide trailer that was just down the street from us. And we lived adjacent, right over here, and Blaine lived right there. And this is what was behind us. We built our house in about '73, something like that. This is what it looked like. Well, after a few years, Lou and I and Gene and Beth said, you know, we want, I don't want to move with that just yet. We want to be safe. We want to be sure that not bad things happen behind us and in our neighborhood, such as it was. All dirt roads, nothing, okay? We were like campers. Then came this moment in our life. We'll get it this way. Within a year or so of us building our house, they decided to build Westlake Village. And everybody is probably familiar with Westlake Village, and I love Westlake Village. I didn't complain, and as far as I know, all the people here today, objecting to what we're trying to do, they didn't complain. I don't know if they were there, but if they were there, they did not complain. Now, that is, this is interesting, because you'll notice down here, these are townhomes and villas. And you look through here, see these locations in here? So there are parts of this subdivision that were built with much higher density per acre than what we're requesting now. But anyway, this was built. And once it was built, this is what I would say, and turn it around so you can read it properly. All hell broke loose, if you'll excuse the expression. This is what became of our neighborhood. Again, this is the area in question, up here, right at this spot here. You'll notice it looks treed now. Why does it look treed? Well, for the first several years of its existence, I was trying desperately, because we bought it in '77, I was trying desperately to raise cattle, to be a rancher. Cows kept jumping out because they liked the grass and the shrubs in Westlake Village better than they liked what we were providing on our field. But look at this. Look at all of this. Now, I say to everybody who's here objecting, did I do this? Did I want this? All I did was try to raise cattle, try to live in the woods, try to protect my backyard, try to protect everybody else's backyard, and now I'm like, the Russians are coming. I mean, really.
If you could wrap up, please, because you'd be on your three minutes. Sorry.
This is the view.
I know you're very passionate.
This is the view that shows looking north from Belcher. This is Belcher and Alderman, right here. And this is where the substation is. You see the substation right there? This is very important. That substation was scheduled by Florida Power to be on our property. And that is what it looks like, right there. And Beth, Lou, and Gene and I said, over our dead bodies. And they said, you can't contest the necessity. And we said, yes, we can. You'll see where it's located. Everybody knows where it's located. So do my neighbors send me a card every year and say, thank you for putting that ugly thing over there? No. My neighbors tell me when I come in here, you must be up to something. You must be moving out any day now. You're plotting and scheming. You're trying to build trailers in our backyard. No, I'm not. And neither is Taylor Morrison. Trust me. These are quality homes. And if anybody objects to the fact that maybe these homes are 10 feet apart or something like that, that's just because they're, and I hate to use the word, but they're an elitist. A lot of the world lives in attached homes and homes that are 10 feet apart, and they're damn happy to. And when you look at the...
Mr. Carroll, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I really have been a very bad land flipper, and I hope that you will enable me to complete this project that we've been trying to work on for 42 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Jill Carbonelli. And after that, is Renee Dyer.
I'm Jill Carbonelli. I'm from Tarpon Springs, and I'm in support of the project.
Okay. Renee Dyer.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Renee Dyer. I've been a resident of Pinellas County for 28 years, and I just recently moved over to this area. I live about three and a half miles from this intersection, and I'm in favor of it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dewey Mitchell. And then the last card in support is Drew Miller.
I think it is afternoon now, so afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Dewey Mitchell. I'm one of the owners of Berkshire Hathaway Florida Properties Group. My colleagues and I represent the Qualls and the Carols in this transaction. And what I wanted to say was that the sellers had the opportunity, and they had choices. A lot, this property was in high demand. A lot of builders looked at it, but at the end, they chose Taylor Morrison to work with because, for three reasons. Number one, they felt like that they would be the greatest stewards of the property. Number two, the product that they are planning on developing and building in there are complementary to the neighborhood and, quite frankly, needed up in that area. And number three, the integrity of the people that they were dealing with, the people representing Taylor Morrison. So anyway, I'm here, and I would greatly appreciate your favorable vote today. Thank you.
Thank you. Drew Miller.
I think they said it best, the Qualls and Carroll did a good job. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Was there anybody else who wished to speak in favor of this that I don't have a card for? Okay, we'll now move to the opponents. Richard Angel Lillis. Then thereafter, Brian Falls. Hello.
Afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you so much. Thank you for also allowing me to speak first. Obviously, I'm against it. I do thank the Carols and the Qualls. They are excellent neighbors as they stand and as they have been. I understand that they would like to make, or deserve, a profit on the property they've owned for so many years. I live, excuse me, I'm Richard Angel Lillis. I live in Pine Hill, same road that the Qualls and the Carols live, but I'm on the north side. We like our woods. We like the quietness, the peace. If you ever have a chance to see the overlay of what this plot of land looks like with the, I don't care whether it's 30 or 24 that you see, it looks like the parking lots at schools where you have the temporary classrooms, bingo base. Look at the floor plan of the proposed buildings that are going on this property. It is remarkable. Is it compatible with the rest of the neighborhoods? Please, I think if you look back, you'll see that it is not consistent with Westlake, with Orange Point, or any place in that ballpark. Personally, what I would like to see happen is that plot of land, this occurred to me as a nighttime thought, turn it into a neighborhood park. That would be acceptable to me. I'm sorry, but I, if there was 10 homes on that property, I would probably be back here objecting, but I would, I have problems with it. It just doesn't seem compatible with the neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Brian Falls.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Brian Falls, and I live at 2875 Pine Hill Road on the north side. A couple of things that concern me about the plan. One, we've been down this road once before, and we agreed on the 24. Thought it was a done deal. I think that that's reasonable. Two, the land was, it was brought up that there are nothing but woods on that land, which is true. What they didn't tell you was that they're going to take bulldozers and bulldoze every single one of those trees down. And my third reservation has to do with the layout itself. I heard someone say that there was 400 feet deep and approximately 940 feet long. There's an 80-foot setback with the power poles, the power lines, which they had brought up. What they did not bring up was the road that's in front of that, which is 20 feet. An average car is six to six and a half feet wide. If you put two cars together, that's 12 to 13 feet on a 20-foot road. Anybody know how wide an average damn, I don't know, fire truck is? You're not going to be able to get it down that road if you have two cars parked. I don't know where these people that are going to move in are going to have people come and visit them, where they're going to park, unless it's in their driveway, and hopefully, they don't have, you know, five or six people coming over for Thanksgiving dinner, because there won't be any place for them to park. And that's about all I have to say in opposition. It doesn't belong in the neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you. And thereafter, Suzanne Krupa.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you so much for all you do for our communities all over. We appreciate it. I have a couple of issues right now. Number one, back in 2005, this property was, they were trying to rezone the property to include, to make 55 townhomes. When all of my neighbors, and there were about 60 of us in the Alderman overlay, when all of my neighbors found out about that and how that might impact us and affect us and what it might do to all of us, we kind of got together, we hired attorneys and land planners, and we had many discussions with the Commissioners and the Commissioners' office and the owners of the property and all. And what we came up with, what I thought we came up with, was the Alderman overlay. And from what I understand, we had created the first overlay in all of Pinellas County based on all of this happening in 2005. Took about a year and a half, and I guess what we came up with was that there would be a compromise, that the property would not be allowed to have the 55 townhomes, but they would go down to 24 homes. We fought it. It cost us a lot of money, a lot of aggravation, a lot of time, a lot of energy, but that was our agreement, and that was 13 years ago. So I guess my biggest beef is like, why now are we coming back and having to relook at it and fight it and argue about it and redo it? I think, you know, I just don't know. I know that it's difficult because you don't want to oppose somebody doing something with their property, and so it's a little bit difficult for all of us, I believe, because we want to support each other. But a deal was a deal. We made this deal that it was going to be 24 houses. One of the things that I really have, I don't know if I misheard Mr. Qual or not, but there was a, Dave Wallace lives right next door to him. Dave Wallace was here earlier in opposition to building the 30 homes, so I don't know how Mr. Qual had figured that he was okay with it. I don't know. He was here, but it took so long to get up here. Anyway, I just... Anyway, I just want to say that it's, I, I saw no compelling additions to this property. They said they were going to take down all of the trees, but they weren't going to be planting mature trees so that it was consistent with the land and the surrounding properties. As you're aware, the Alderman overlay has one house per two acres and we, my neighbors and I all have two acres. The Commissioners had deemed that the Alderman overlay was worthy of preservation because of all of its uniqueness, from the trees, the wildlife and all of the good stuff that we all support and we're stewards of the land. The Quals have their house up for sale, so he doesn't, they don't really care what happens behind them. I don't know what else is going on other than I just wanted to say thank you for the right thing. Doing the right thing for the community, doing the right thing for everyone. And I'm sure that you will make the best judgment for everyone involved. So thank you so much for hearing this.
Thank you. I just skipped up. Yes, thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Suzanne Crouppa. I also live in the Alderman overlay, but I'm not going to address that. What I'm going to do is to tell all of you what I told the land planning agency. My story is a little different than some of my neighbors. I actually sat down and spent a great deal of time going over the property appraiser's website. When the county planner, I'm sorry, I don't remember his, his name, the last gentleman in the second row, said that it's consistent, it's not consistent with any part of our neighborhood. Not the overlay, but any part of it. Because when I looked at the maps that they have there, almost, and again, Westlake to the west, Autumn Woods to the west, Innisburg, no, I'm sorry, Innis Glen also to the west, were all lots that were 75 feet and greater. Commissioner Eggers, you asked the dimensions on the property. The better question is what are the dimensions on the lots? The lots are 50 feet wide. That's not consistent. Even in Beacon, Orange Point and Beacon Groves, those lots, unless you're on a corner where you have a pie shape, those lots are 75 feet wide. The overlay is, is wonderful. Okay, carve that out. Everything else is 75, 90 feet, 100 feet, 110 feet, but it's not 50 feet. Nowhere there is a 50 feet. That's my opposition because it is not consistent. And since everybody has looked back at previous zonings, I really believe, and I was not a homeowner in this area at that time, but I believe that there was a mistake made at that point. Because to allow for 24 homes there does not say that there's 24 homes that go in that parcel. They forget about the carve-outs for water retention, the carve-outs for roads. And even the road at this point, which my neighbor Brian brought up, there's no place to park. You know, you get two cars parked on opposite sides of the road, you're not going to get emergency vehicles down there. So what's done is done. You have the density that, of 24 homes, which I think was wrong to begin with, but please do not allow them to bump the density up again. And as far as Mr. Quall and Mr. Carroll making an investment, okay, they pay taxes. My husband and I have done the same thing and we've paid taxes on that. And sometimes you win and sometimes you break even and sometimes you lose. We can't be held responsible for that. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Russell Fernandez? And then thereafter Judy Galladay?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Russell Fernandez and I live at 3277 Rolling Woods Drive, Palm Harbor. My wife and I submitted, my wife Rebecca and I submitted a letter to the board. Hopefully, you've received it and it's part of the record and I won't go through that whole thing. It's based basically on, on our, kind of an historical view of how the county got to allowing 24 single-family homes. We rise in opposition not to the single-family nature of this. We're in favor of that. The 24, we believe that the 24 units per acre is appropriate. I won't repeat some of the things that some of the other folks have said in opposition other than just touch base back and taking a look at where we are now and what they're asking for. It seems like a simple request. We only want to put six more houses. There's 24 here, six, just put six more houses. That's 25 percent. That's a 25 percent increase. In North Pinellas County, in one of the most densely populated counties in the state of Florida, anybody been at that intersection of Alderman and Belcher Road around 3 o'clock in the afternoon when school's in session, it's a challenge. So we're not, I'm not, not objecting to the 24 units per acre nor the single-family nature of it. I think the issue is, is it compatible with the surrounding developments? And when we talk about allowable units, growth zoning, it's based on 9.5 acres. I understand how you get there. The reality is, what's the real density? What is it really, what are you really putting there? How does it look? There's a big Duke Energy power line in there that takes, takes away a lot of the buildable area. Understood. But let's look at the land use right around it. And let's not get into RPD 5 or whether you can put three units or five units there. Let's look at what the abutting properties show. To the south, Westlake Village, the properties that abut, that piece of property range from 80 feet in width to 129 feet in width. To the west, which is part of the Alderman overlay, those lots run width from 200 feet to 280 feet. Across Alderman Road to the north is the Alderman overlay. That's 0.5 units per acre. That's one house per two acres. And there is a large eight acre parcel vacant, part of the overlay. The effective, effective density allowable there is 0.5 units per acre should it ever be built. Look across to the east, across Belcher Road to the, the Orange Point and Beacon Grove subdivision. Those lots are 75 feet wide, not 50 feet wide. Our position is that the 50-foot width, in order, in order to accommodate however the, the plan is to get 30 units on there with 50-foot wide lots is not compatible with the actual density and the actual way that, that property has been built out. And I don't think it's appropriate and I would ask you, there's not a compelling, let's just put it this way, there's not a compelling reason to approve this. And I would ask that you just honor the, our feelings against it and also the LPAs' motion to deny, 5 to 1. Thank you.
Judy Galladay? Ralph Moody? You don't want, wish to speak? Okay, you're in the record though as opposed. Lydia Moody? Okay, in the record as opposed. Andy Galladay? Is Andy here? Okay. That's all the cards that I have speaking against this item. Is there anybody else who did not submit a card that wishes to speak against? Okay. We'll bring Mr. Williams back for, oh, I'm sorry.
May I have my three minutes now and-
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Jean Quall?
Good afternoon. My name is Jean Quall. I live at 930 Pine Hill Road. First, I'd like to show you where some of the detractors or people in opposition live.
From the seal.
I'm not quite sure. Oh, document on seal. Okay, there we go.
Just as you would see it.
Okay. This is Ms. Brown. This is the Gallotti family. This is the Angel Ellis family. And this is the Crouppa and Fernandez families down here at the corner of Forest Hills, or Forest Grove and Beacon Road. They live quite a distance from the subject property. This, this is the property that abuts the Ms. Brown's property, the Gallotti property, Mr. Falls' property and the Angel Ellis property. That's what they look out on from the back of their property and that's what is on the north side of the subject parcel here. I find it hard to believe that what is proposed here will be less attractive or less aesthetically pleasing than that. I do believe that some of the reason there is opposition is reasons that were given to the planning board. One of the opponents' statements to the planning board was, quote, "It's not going to enhance us." I think that's the problem here. The overlay is in position. There's going to be no negative effect on the properties that are covered by the overlay. As Commissioner Wells said earlier this morning, seems like a long time ago, there is a need for housing in Pinellas County. This is quality housing. It's consistent with the development in the area and we believe it will be a benefit to the county and both to the housing and to the aesthetics of that area. Thank you very much.
Hey, Mr. Williams, you have nearly four minutes left to rebut.
Thank you very much. Again, Robert Williams with Lewis Lomond and Walker, representing the applicant in this case, Taylor Morrison Homes. You know, it always is, it always comes down to be a difficult decision and a lot of the testimony to be heard. What we would indicate, and Ms. Quall stole my thunder, she stole pretty much all my thunder on some of this, where the, most of the folks that you've heard from, if not all, today, live in fact on the north side of Alderman Road. It is bears repeating that there not a single resident of this development that is proposed will be, have a reason unless they have a friend or, you know, someone they have an acquaintance with to be inside Pine Hill Road or inside that overlay district. The roads are not contained inside. They won't travel down Pine Hill Road to get to this development. They'll access ingress and egress off of Belcher Road. And I, I think that does bear repeating. You know, there's a place for very, this is, this will be good housing. This will be very good housing. And this is the right place and this is in fact a very needed time to have that housing. Taylor Morrison will build a very quality development at this location if you allow them to. The, we, we heard quite a bit about, where was that? I'll find it. We heard quite a bit about the fire, fire trucks and rescue trucks and those kinds of things. The, it will be built to code. You're, believe, you should know and rest assured that your fire marshal will in fact, and fire chief will in fact, force us to meet the code to get fire trucks up and down the road. I've fought many battles, not battles, but had very fun discussions with, with fire marshals as well over the size of cul-de-sacs and all those kinds of things. And they pretty much always win. Okay, so they're going to get the size of road that they would like. The, this is the slide that I was gonna, gonna look at. This is Pine Hill Road. It is a rural area. It is a rural nature. But the roads that we have that will be planned in here, the fire code requires 16-foot wide for the fire truck. I believe this meets that code and this is a narrow road. The Pinellas County code requires a 20-foot wide for neighborhood roads. And the minimum size of these lots are 50 by 110 and 25 or 30 or 120 feet deep are, are the planned lot sizes that we have here. Could be two spaces in every garage as well. So my point is, is that the, the issues on the fire, a rescue are really unfounded. It's something to consider. It's something you better always remember because that's, that's important. However, in this particular case, we'll meet that code. We'll make sure that those fire trucks and emergency vehicles can ingress and egress because life safety is important to, to the residents of Taylor Morrison Homes. The other item is, so you've heard again about the townhomes and I really do feel like I need to address that. The 55 townhomes, that was a product of if you had the, the land use change that was requested, it would allow up to 55 townhomes on that 10-acre parcel. Those 55 townhomes were never proposed as an actuality of what would occur. And so I think that's important. So that's like saying if you change the land use designation, it goes to five units per the acre. But the master plan pulls you right back down to 3.1, which is appropriate for this piece of property and appropriate for this area as well. I don't know whether Ms. Albert has anything to add.
There was so much going on. You know, we're saying that the agreement was to have 24. We agreed to this. This was part of our deal and everything. It was not. The applicant came on their own and this was the result of the original rezoning when they came in in 2005. I just need one more minute, please. But back in 2005, when they came in, they had no development proposal. It was just open-ended. And a staff report says you can have up to 55 units. That scared a lot of people, including the board. They say, no, we don't like that. We actually want a development order. You're welcome to come back if you want with the development order. Meanwhile, I would like you staff to go and look at, at an overlay for these folks over there who have concerns. Well, that was done. That was approved. They got the protection. The properties owner came back with a development order, proposed their 24 units. And as of today, there's no interest. It was not working out. The developer at that time failed. And then during that, and then since then, they've been trying to meet with different developers. Taylor Morrison had a really good proposal for them and this is why we're here before you. It is consistent with a comprehensive plan. It's a consistent with county-wide plan. Staff, your, your professionals find it supportable. So I'm here if you have any questions. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. If you have any questions. Yes, ma'am.
Two questions. One is when you did your first presentation, and I had asked the question, I think you had mentioned that there was going to be a 30-foot setback on the south end of the property. But when you did your presentation, you said it was only in the west.
I got, Ms. Albert corrected me on that.
It's west only.
So there'd be 30 foot on the west, if you'll explain.
And 20 feet on the south.
So to the, to the north and to the west, there's going to be a 10-foot buffer.
North and west?
Correct. In addition to that, there's going to be that 20-foot rear yard setback to the west and actually to the north as well. To the south, you have a 5-foot buffer. I'm doing this off of memory and the-
And there's going to be a fence, I mean, a wall all the way around.
There's also going to be a wall there. And that was part of it. What we did is we looked at the original development order and we tried to meet that as much as we could, including the height, the, then the proposal of the wall. And so that's where that came from.
Okay. And you also mentioned that you were going to put the drainage ponds on the Florida Power easement?
Correct. That was per discussion with Tico.
And Florida Powers, or Duke Energy's agreed to that?
So our engineers did meet with them while they were preparing the, the plan and they did meet with them and they agreed to those storm retention pauses. That you, you may have that there. So that is with their agreement with staff from, from Duke. Yes.
All right. Any other questions for, is it Commissioners, Commissioner Eggers?
Have questions. Well, not, no, I'm sorry, not you guys. Sorry, to the staff.
And I have questions for staff as well.
Sorry about that.
Do you have a, just a quick, can we get the presentation that you did, can we get that PowerPoint emailed to us?
Yes.
Thank you.
I do have a question.
Yes, Commissioner March.
Because you and I were here when that 55-
Oh, yeah.
... unit proposal came. And I do remember, I remember when one of the ladies from the neighborhood came up. I recognized her face. And so I do remember how we got to that 24. You could do the 24 without a land use change?
Right now, you are correct. We can do the 24 without the land use change. However, a development order is expired and therefore we would have to come back through this process to request this development.
How did you arrive at 30? Is it simple economics or what drove you to 30?
No, this was actually, this was looking at a prototype of Taylor Morrison and they laid out the land, they laid out the stormwater and then they came up with that. And they were able to, to make it work.
Okay, so you only looked at 30? You didn't look at 24 or Taylor Morrison?
Now, now, well, I can address that a little bit. You know, obviously, they're going to want to maximize their potential profit. So there's no, you know, no risk in admitting that today. But 30 makes this work. 24 does not make this work. Where you can get the type of quality development in there with the amenities that need to be in there with, with the constraints that you have. And it, this is the, you know, last open piece of property in the neighborhood, pretty much. So that's, that's what drives that.
Okay. And did I hear you correctly that the opponents all live north of Alderman? Was that correct?
Everyone that spoke at, and Ms. Quall actually did the, did the work on, the footwork on this, like where she, everyone that spoke, to our understanding, does live north of Alderman. And I'm not aware of anyone that lives south of Alderman that spoke in opposition to this.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, oh, wait a minute.
No, 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 no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, I apologize. Sorry.
Michael? And Commissioner Eggers, you can go first.
Hi. First of all, just wanted, this is not his only case. This is a land use case, right? Future land use map amendment.
It's a future land use and a development master plan, so two issues on.
So the first part is legislative?
Correct, and the master plan is quasi-judicial.
There you go. Again, okay, thank you. All right. One of the questions, I think they focused on a little bit, the lot sizes themselves are at 50 feet, that's what I heard. Even though we're not doing site plan, I just want any clarification.
Right speaker.
That's the proposed.
Yes, and, and that's something that's looked at, at the, at the master plan, so it's, it's an item that you can bring up and discuss because it's part of the master plan.
Talked about the buffer already. Alderman overlay, I've heard a couple of comments made about this. Clearly, this property does not fall in the overlay. I heard somebody say that the property immediately to the west, including Pine Hill Road, does not fall in the overlay. Is that?
No, it, it does.
It does?
It does.
All of the Pine Hill property, all of the property to the west falls within the overlay?
Yes. So the subject property is here.
Right.
Everything that is residential agriculture with the residential rural land use is all in the overlay here.
Okay.
Comes out here. So these eight properties.
Just the RA.
Well, yeah, the RA, there's transportation, utility corridor that runs through here, there's some preservation up in this area. But it's just this, this area, and then these eight lots on the south side of Alderman Road are included.
I haven't spoken about that, sir. I apologize.
No, that's okay. I wanted to make sure I was, I was clear on it. And just the property itself, the nine and a half acres, the length, the square footage that you, or the length, the, the linear footage that you talked about earlier, that's all buildable. That's the buildable property. I just don't want to confuse it with any of the Duke Energy property, so we are.
Yeah, the, the nine and a half acres is the entire property. The Duke Energy, so they can't put any structures in it, but the land use that's on the property now is currently residential suburban with the RPD zoning, and it has a transportation utility, we have an overlay on the land use, which recognizes that there is a power corridor through here, but with it being an overlay, they're allowed to calculate the density of the entire parcel. They just cannot construct anything in there subject to Duke.
So, so the nine and a half acres includes the entire area of the over, of the utility overlay?
Entire property.
So now we are, we're taking that 80-foot away from the width of the development that you gave me earlier, which was about 400 feet wide?
No, that includes that. That's, includes the entire property.
That's what you said.
Includes the 80 feet?
Yes.
Okay. Right. So includes, so what they're going to actually develop on is about 320 feet. Just, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure I'm clear, and I guess that gets to some of the issues about the, how much is getting compressed into the buildable area as opposed to we give them development rights outside of the buildable area. So just wanted to make sure I was clear on that. And then, again, you know, I guess because I'm dealing with some things in, in the, in the area, that people have short memories, so property owners have short memories about a light being able to be put there later. And so I just would, you know, obviously, if any, anybody that's selling the property needs to divulge that no lights will be allowed there because it will come back later. And then the merge lane, is there such, do we, does, is our, our traffic people create merge lane requirements, like, like merge onto Belcher requirements, likes?
All defer to Public Works. Ken Jacobs is here.
Good, Ken. Can you come up, Ken, just for a second? Just, just wanted to make sure that that's in your purview when this development comes through.
Ken Jacobs, Public Works Transportation. Relative to the signal, a subdivision with that number of homes will never ever meet a warrant for a traffic signal. Usually it takes, if, if it's a, a larger subdivision, 200 to 300 homes, to get to the point where you might generate the number of trips necessary.
Number of accidents don't, don't dictate that.
Not, not, not necessarily that. Accidents could be an indication of a problem that we might have to, to take care of. In this kind of case, that would never generate a traffic signal. It may generate a modification to access.
Okay.
So relative to, if, if we were to look at the, the, the plan that came through for permitting, we could make recommendations for either a right turn in or a acceleration lane leaving the subdivision if we thought that, that would be the safest operation for that intersection.
And that's, and that'll be borne by the.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Wait, can I follow on that before he leaves?
Yeah.
So would you do a right turn in and right turn out? Because I was trying to see, based on their plan, if you look at that, it looks like there's a small median there?
Yes, the, the small median right here, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
That's actually the beginning of the left turn lane.
Okay.
So most likely, we would look at it to leave the left turn lane out.
You would allow a left turn lane out?
Again, we'd have to look at it, but we're only talking about, at 30 houses, you're talking peak trips of about 30. So you assume half of those people are going to go south, half are going to go north. So in a peak period, you're only talking about 17 turns in an hour. So again, we would probably look at it to, to leave that access there, but again, we would monitor, and if there was ever an accident issue, situation, we would proactively change that access if we needed to. But again, given the alternative, you're going to have all the people turn to right, and then they're going to have to make a U-turn somewhere. So we have to look at the entire area to make sure that, what the best access method is going to be.
Okay. Yeah, and then, no, that's fine. And then just a question on how the future land use map amendment and the, the land use that's on the property now is, how does, what is the land use on the property now?
Currently residential suburban, which allows 2 and 1/2 units an acre. They're requesting residential low, which allows up to five units an acre. Their proposal is, I had it wrong, it is 3.1. It's 3.17 on my PowerPoint. I had 3.7.
And there's a countywide plan?
Countywide plan, it's RLM, which allows 10 units an acre.
Okay.
We have policies that are scenic corridor policies that we look at, which, which is staff, we would, we look at as limiting on scenic corridors up to five units.
Right. And here, in this area, no city can come in with their own changes and, and put those on.
It's not your.
Property owners, not here. We have other areas in the county that were subject to annexation requests. So I think, you know, land use plans and future land use plan amendments are done for a reason. They're embedded in our community, they're embedded in the people that live there, and the expectations are there. So I think those are part and parcel of why we create these to begin with, so that people have expectations going down the road. We're talking about land use now, not zoning, so it's a little different. Anyway, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, any other questions for Michael? Okay, with that, I am closing the public hearing. Commissioners?
Move approval.
Move approval of.
Staff recommendation?
Of the staff's recommendation, which is to allow the 30 units.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion by Commissioner Justice, second by Commissioner Peters. Is there any further discussion? Okay, then we'll go ahead and open up the voting cards. Okay, it passes by five to two. Okay, thank you all very much, each and every one of you, for being here today. We have, I'm going to leave it up to the commissions' discretion, we probably have about 30 minutes of citizens to be heard. There are a lot of citizens who wish to be heard. And certainly, we could take a half-hour break at this point, but we will be allowing them to wait.
It looks like more than 30 minutes.
Pardon me?
It looks like more than 30 minutes.
It is, but it looks like many of them are waiting their time to speak. So I estimate it's about 30 minutes.
Okay.
Let's, let's hear.
All right, so there's a lot of citizens, citizens to be heard, and quite a few on the mobile home issue. I would ask, it looks like that there are seven who wish to speak. I would ask that you try to have, is, have spokesperson for this issue, and with that, I'll ask Mr. Pressman to start. Mr. Pressman here? Okay, then Andrew, are you Andrew Schiller?
No, I'm James Ayotte. Mr. Pressman, I think, is downstairs with the majority of the group.
Okay.
They were anticipating a break.
James Ayotte, okay.
They were grabbing something to eat. I just tested Mr. Pressman and asked him to get back up here to do a presentation.
You wish to wait to Mr. Pressman's here?
If, if that's possible.
Do you think they're downstairs getting something? Then I will.
Yes, they, they are in the cafeteria. They were.
Okay.
Anticipating a break, sorry, I apologize.
They were anticipating we were going to take a break?
Yes.
Well, then, maybe we will take a break.
Thank you.
We'll take a half-hour break, and we'll be back.
Thank you. Otherwise, I'm going to get crouchy.
We're ready to move ahead with Agenda Item 18, which is Citizens to be Heard. And we'll start with Dana Bresso on the North Loop Pinellas County Trail. Hello. Oh, excuse me, before you start, I was supposed to announce we were having a 1:00 PM work session. And obviously, we're not through our regular county commission agenda, so as soon as this meeting is concluded, we will then move to that work session. Welcome. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dana Bresso, and I guess it's good afternoon now. I expected good morning, but long meeting. Wow, first time I've ever attended a meeting. I have written all of you emails. My husband has too. I live on Northside and Aspen Dry, and like all of my neighbors, we are definitely against the trail being on Northside. And I just wanted to make you aware of some safety issues and concerns, as someone who has been there for many years, that you might not be aware of. At the intersection of Countryside and Northside, sorry, I sound a little nervous, I know, it goes from two lanes to four lanes. Basically, two lanes goes to one, and one lane goes to two. So you're at a really critical spot at Northside and Countryside. Northside is also used as a detour when there are traffic accidents on US-19. The traffic is often routed down Northside, then Countryside over to Curlew or Main Street. Many people use Northside and Countryside Boulevard for their daily commute to and from work, to avoid McMullen Booth Road and to avoid US-19. Emergency vehicles and large construction trucks use Northside quite frequently. Delivery trucks going to the Olive Garden and Bob Evans quite often cut up Northside. And also, Mondays, we have three different city trucks that go up and down Northside to get to all the side roads off of Northside. Numerous buses letting off schoolchildren also use Northside and Countryside Boulevard. When you use Northside, as you know, there are 10 more cross streets. So according to Mr. Jacobs, the goal was to have as few cross streets as you can to make it a safe route. So McMullen Booth is not one of your options, I realize, but yet you are choosing Northside over other options, even though Northside has more potential for accidents. So I don't quite understand that. Mr. Eggers, you mentioned something earlier this morning that kind of resonated with me. When you purchase a home, you look around the area. You purchase a home for the things that you want in that neighborhood. We purchased our home over 28 years ago, and the reason we purchased that home was because of the neighborhood, the surrounding areas. We have a large city lot. We're kind of tucked away, we're off the beaten path. That's what we wanted. According to MLS, there are no homes in my zip code for sale. That meet my criteria. So moving isn't really an option for me. Thank you.
Thank you. We also received some additional information in general mail, so I will make sure that this is passed around to all the rest of the county commissioners. Julie Peluso.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Hi, I am Julie Peluso, and I'm a resident of Palm Harbor, unincorporated area. And I'm here today just to give you, just speak a little bit about and give you some information regarding the roundabout, proposed roundabout by DOT at Florida Ave and Alternate 19. And I know that four of you sit on the Forward Pinellas slash MPO Board as well. So I wanted to make you aware of a little bit of the history of why they even came up with this proposal, was because in 2015, the residents were concerned about getting pedestrian traffic across Alternate 19, which has a speed limit of 40 to 45 miles an hour there. So there was a lot of different input, and the DOT came up with a proposal of, okay, let's put in a roundabout. There's the Pinellas Trail that is right there, right here, and they want to do where residents can go across the street here. The other proposal that DOT did warrant is justify, is a light at Nebraska Ave. And Nebraska Ave goes from Alternate 19 all the way through and past US-19. So going forward, they've had a couple of meetings, Forward Pinellas, as well as DOT, and recently, they had one where they did a presentation of the proposal and allowed people just to write at comment cards. But I kept hearing people saying how much, they had a lot of other comments that weren't being heard in this set setting. So I put out an informal poll on Palm Harbor Happenings, which is a social media site, as well as a couple of others. And I found within 24 hours, I received 450 responses, and 70%, close to 70%, want a light at Nebraska, and only 16.8% wanted this roundabout. And there's a lot of good reasons as to why they didn't, a lot of gray comments. A lot of people said that they did not want the roundabout, but they didn't say that they wanted a light, so I didn't even count those in there. But all those, I even printed them. There's some really good reasons why. And as leaders, you know, you want to represent those that you are leading. And I just want to let you know, Forward Pinellas know, and I've let DOT and our state reps know that there's some reasons that we need to pause sometimes, not go forward right away, but pause and start listening to other options. Thank you. Oh, and I do have to also tell you that there is a public meeting, a town hall meeting at the Palm Harbor Library on December 12th, it's a Thursday, 6:00 to 7:30, put on by the Palm Harbor Chamber of Commerce for all of you to attend.
Thank you. Next, we have quite a few speakers, and I'm trying to go through all the yellow cars, but this is on the Florida Manufactured Housing Association. And it looks like there are seven speakers, but perhaps Todd Pressman can condense this. And there seems to be quite a few that have waived their speaking. And so perhaps you'd like to have them stand after you make your comments.
Thank you. So the folks here for the Manufactured Home Association Concerns and Public Emergency, if you would please stand. So these are all folks who have the concerns of the single owner manufactured home parks that are down here today. Men and Chairman and Commissioners, Todd Pressman, 202nd Avenue South in St. Petersburg, Florida. We're here today, really a DEFCON 5. We are, and the industry is having a public emergency, and it affects the entire industry, and it's Pinellas County Y. We are here today to bring the level of attention to the elected officers of what we consider to be a public issue. Let me be very clear, we're not here with any blame of any staff member. We have been interfacing with Administrator Blake Lyons. Blake is always great to work with as Administrator. But as this has started with individual lots, and has mushroomed into more and more lots, it became apparent that we're dealing with a much more serious issue, and a much more direct issue that affects the entire county. The issue has to do with the way there's a great inequity and bias for single-owned manufactured home parks versus all other single-family homes in the entire county. There's a great bias and inequity between that, which I'll walk you through if I may. If we could go to the overhead camera and stay on that, please? So this is the typical Pinellas County single-family home subdivision, or any typical single-family home, anywhere in Pinellas County, individual lot owners. Each separate lot gets a 10,000 square foot and purview service exemption, anywhere throughout the county. Now, that example continues the same for manufactured home park that are individual lot owners. Each individual of these lots, separately owned, would get a 10,000 square foot exemption. But something curious happens on your stormwater manual, when we're talking about one whole park owned by one entity or one person managed by a larger entity. If any single lot or two expand beyond 3,000 square feet, that's the final exemption for this, in this example, this entire manufactured home park. They would have to then start to attenuate and address stormwater issues, which would mean that you would have to start removing manufactured homes and home places to make room for those type elements. Obviously, that's much different than every other single-family home in Pinellas County. So as you look at your stormwater manual, there's two areas that we are here to ask the commission to consider a suspension or interpretation differently, which is number one, that single-family residents are not a part of a large development unless they exceed 10,000 square foot exemption. That exemption is tremendous for single-family homes, and only 3,000 for a single. We think that needs to change. The second is redevelopment project. When your staff receives a permit for one single lot, they categorize that as a redevelopment project of the entire manufactured home park. That we feel and ask for expediting, that that should be interpreted differently. And again, should be treated like all single-family homes. So it's my understanding that commissioners and staff have been talking about expanding and making it easier and more motivation to use manufactured homes for your affordable home policies. This works exactly against that. It is counterintuitive to the goals that you want to make for affordable housing, because affordable housing on the manufactured home parks is quality, and it is much, much less expensive than other options that you have. So, in summary, we believe a single-family home is a single-family home. They should be treated the same. And let me say that in our urgency and in our concerns of crisis, and let me be very clear, we have many residents that can't get into homes. They're back in Ohio, they're elsewhere in Florida, who are planning to move here, they can't move into homes. We have mobile homes that are manufactured, that are sitting on the side of the road. We have manufactured homes that are put in a site, and they can't get permits, they can't even tie them down. So we have residents and citizens who are facing a disaster in their lives. We're trying to move that and get through that as quickly as possible. In our urgency and in our understanding of the crisis that we're in, as we began to understand the issue and began to move quickly, we may have ruffled some feathers, and if we did, give my personal apology, that's on me. But this is what we consider to be, again, a public emergency, that we need to have immediate movement and attention on, and to continue to move forward with the Administrator and with Blake. Happy to answer any questions, and there's many people here speak, including Mr. Iad, who came down from Tallahassee, who's the CEO of the association.
This come to me about a week ago, and staff is talking, and they're meeting actually tomorrow regarding looking at this ordinance and how it applies, but that's where we're at.
And I'm scheduled, along with Mr. Burton, to meet with Mr. Pressman on Thursday.
And I just want to be clear of which ordinance we're talking about. This only applies to the unincorporated. This is the one that we just enacted about six years ago.
I'll let Blake.
So, there's 16 cities that have their own, I was just trying to, so that we have an apples-to-apples comparison, and if cities are seeing the same kind of, have they applied the code to their properties?
Good afternoon, Blake Lyon, Director of Building Development Review Services and Code Enforcement. So, there's the Stormwater Manual that applies to unincorporated properties throughout the county. There's also part of the discussion that Mr. Burton alluded to is the Flood Plane Ordinance. Some of these mobile home parks actually are within flood planes, so it applies to those as well. And then, the Florida building code requirements are statewide, countywide. So, there's, depending on which issue you're talking about, some of them are county unincorporated specific, some of them are across the board.
This particular one he's talking about, I think, is just the unincorporated, our surface water, stormwater.
Correct.
Program that we initiated.
That is correct.
Yes.
Okay.
And then the floor, the flood.
I'm not talking about the elevation, I'm not talking about the flood plane, I'm talking about.
The Stormwater Manual that.
Let me clarify, I think what you're talking about, Commissioner Justice, is our stormwater fee.
Correct.
This is not related to our stormwater fee.
So, this is not.
This is related to development standards that we have in place that are stormwater-related.
That's county-wide?
No, this is only for the unincorporated there.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, the surface water assessment, I think, is what you're.
That's where I was thinking, that we have some exemptions for certain spaces, and we grant automatic exemptions for a certain amount of property.
Yeah, what's being discussed in this context is the Stormwater Manual that is just unincorporated lots within the county.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to make sure I was on the same page.
Blake, just real quick on that same vein, as it relates to comparing a single-owned lot, or a single-owned park versus individually-owned park, is there indeed a different interpretation for each of those situations? And the same thing happens if you go from a unit to a larger unit? Let's, we're upsizing the unit now. Is there a difference in how they're treated?
The short answer to that is yes. So, a platted, single-family residential subdivision, as Mr. Pressman alluded to, does allow for up to 10,000 square feet of impervious surface. That includes driveways, pool decks, roofline, you know, anything else that goes along with that impervious surface. That's for traditional, single-family detached residential. For multifamily, commercial, industrial, the threshold is when you're increasing it by more than 3,000 square feet. So, what's, what many of these parks are facing is they were developed in the 50s, 60s, 70s without any stormwater requirements at the time they were originally constructed. And so, as they come in today and they're looking to reconfigure the lot layout, change out different unit sizes, add amenities, whatever the case may be for those parks, you have a situation where the park is owned by one, typically one entity, and the units themselves are individually-owned. And so, when you have a individual unit replacement, to the Administrator's point, if they're equal or lesser size, there's no additional criteria that's involved. But when you start to increase those, go from a single wide to a double wide, or start adding additional impervious surfaces, taking it down, adding a new carport, something along those lines, we start to look at the cumulative impact so that we can look at the overall park assessment and apply those criteria.
But you made a comment that that was, new parks that were starting, new parks that would be.
Not necessarily, it could be, change out of existing parks.
Understand, but I would understand the argument for brand-new parks that are being created with our codes today.
Right.
But as it relates to the old codes.
Right.
That affect single-family, single-unit lot owners, as well as one owner for the, they may have come in at the same time.
Sure.
And subject to the same interpretations, you know, by the size of the lots and increasing size. So, if one person comes in and asks for an increase in the size of their unit.
Right.
It triggers.
We would, yes, we would then look at what the requirements are today. Same thing you would have for a verified non-conforming use. Take out single-family altogether. If it were any non-conforming use, whether that's unit size, density, whatever the case may be, if you come into the county and you're requesting to enlarge that, we're going to evaluate the enlargement based on the current code requirements.
But just, last question, I'm sorry. They're not treated the same. Those two situations are not treated the same.
Correct. So, this is not a single-family residence.
I get you. So, that's what we, that's what they're asking us to address. Thank you.
But if they're treated like, like one unit, then any times one person in that 150-unit park wants to change, they're impacting everybody else in the park.
Correct.
Because you have to, you're talking about having to redevelop the whole park, or repla-
We're talking about needing a overall, for lack of a better description, a master plan or an approach that looks at the larger issue that's associated with the park.
I think that's an issue. I mean, you have all these other owners that haven't done anything to their unit.
Right, so, we're looking, we're trying to work with the park owner.
Well, I understand that.
Yeah.
But you have existing people living there.
Agreed, yeah. I mean.
That you're disrupting maybe with the need for a new plan.
I take a little bit of issue with the disruption portion of it that Mr. Pressman mentioned, because we have tried to make accommodations, in other words, where there have been delivery of new units and the placement and the tie-downs, and we've allowed for some of those to go through and be delivered and go through the tie-downs so that the unit itself is not at risk.
Right.
But we have been working with them, we have set the expectation that they do need to address some of the stormwater requirements in order to be able to complete the inspections and to get a certificate of occupancy for those units. So, that.
I get that, but it seems like the threshold is pretty low compared to a single-family residence, because any, anything you do is going to impact the neighbors. If you tell the park they have to take out 10 units, how do you pick the 10 units that are, the people that are living there?
Well, I mean, and that's, and that's.
Am I making sense?
That's the need for, that's the need for the collaborative discussion approach, because most of these are not your single-family zoning, they're not your, you know, AER.
No, I know.
R1, R2, they're what was R6, now residential multifamily. So, it does fall under that threshold of needing to address this as a cumulative and kind of park-wide issue, not the individual.
Well, I mean, if it's kind of a unique situation, because you have one person owning the land and all these other owners.
Yeah.
That are impacted by anything.
Yeah, I mean, it is, it is a bit more of a communal approach in that respect.
Right, which, good luck with that.
I have a follow-up question.
I mean, is there a way that this is being done differently?
And that's, that's part of the reason for this review, okay? Again, this was identified a week ago, or last Friday, where we were trying to zero in on what the issue is. So, we've asked staff to look at this, we've heard their concerns, you know, and again, we haven't had a chance to spend time to do that, and we can, we can kind of do that here, but staff really hasn't had a chance to collaborate with both Public Works and our stormwater folks and with Planning, Building and Development regarding the impacts of these various decisions.
So, Madam Chair, Commissioner Peters had her hand up first, and then I'll turn to you.
So, I guess my concern is, and I got information from the Association, that 38,000 mobile, plus 38,6 something, mobile homes in the county, but yet 25, more than 25,000 are a single-owned unit. So, this isn't just one or two single-owner parks. This is, 66% of all of them are single-owner parks. And so, I guess my concern is if there's immediacy, and if Mr. Pressman was accurate in immediacy on doing this, that, you know, I know you've only known about it for a week, but is there any way that we could kind of make you all do it quickly, come together and kind of?
The staff's meeting on it tomorrow.
So, I just, it's not, it's not just one or two parks that we're worried about here, it's a lot of parks.
It's just interesting that this has been in place for six years, and suddenly it's become an issue.
Hold on, the Stormwater Manual that was adopted was implemented on April 1st, 2017. So, we're talking about.
Two years.
Two and a half years.
Separate from the fee.
Year and a half.
The Stormwater Fee, which we went through a lot of.
I want to be clear, yeah, this is, this is the Stormwater Manual requirements. It deals with attenuation and water quality, and so, there are others in the room that can speak much more eloquently than I, but part of what the purpose and the emphasis behind that Stormwater Manual is that we have a lot of impaired water bodies in and throughout Pinellas County. And so, we're trying to make sure that everybody has their, plays their part, does their role in trying to certainly help with the overall attenuation from a flood risks standpoint, but also the overall water quality and changing, you know, from the general kind of typical dry pond, wet pond kind of approach now to the Stormwater Manual, which provides a myriad of different options that can allow for those nutrient reductions. And so, as you can appreciate any development, regardless of it being a manufactured home or not, that we've seen a lot of this conversation come out in and around the conversations down in the Seminole area, where many of these homes were built pre-stormwater requirements and trying to get new development to look at those requirements as it comes through. And so, if everybody takes on an individual degree of responsibility, then we start making a cumulative impact. And so, that's, that's the, at least the staff's position behind why we think it's important.
Ms. Welch?
Yeah, I'd just like to speak to the consumer's position, because when you live in a mobile home park and you own your home, you're, and you're in a home, a mobile home park that is owned by a single owner, you're paying a lot fee to put your home on that lot. And if you're expanding your home and it's affecting now, like Commissioner Gerard said, 10 neighbors around you, well, they're all going to be affected by how much the owner is going to start charging in the park for the, for the home to actually be in the park. And it's a, it's a, it has the potential to be, as Mr. Pressman said, really catastrophic for our citizens, because just imagine, if you live up north and you want to move to Florida and you decide you want, you like the lifestyle of living in a mobile home community, so you buy a mobile home, and then you look around for where you want to put it, and you are renting a space, and now all of a sudden, you're going to double your rent space to live there? I mean, at what point do we have an obligation to alert people to this issue that they would have no way of knowing?
And I'll, I can echo you on that, but there's, there's got to be balance, and I think we're all going to look for balance. With sea level rising, which is one of your biggest concerns.
It is.
If you do not address these in the impaired waterways, we are not solving the problem for the future. And so, we need to find the balance, and I'm sure that we will, and I'm sure that staff will work diligently on this. But we can't have our cake and eat it too.
No, I get it. My point is, Commissioner Seal, there's been no notice, as far as I know, to the rank-and-file citizens that live in these parks of what's coming down the pike. And some of them, I'm pretty sure, because when we went through that whole debacle with the Bay Pines Mobile Home Park, that was way before your time, I think, Blake, but I mean, we had residents that had lived in those homes for 50 years and were really, really elderly. They had no place else to go. It was a nightmare. And so, I mean, beyond the fact that I know we have to find a solution, keeping the citizens and the consumer in mind, I think, is we have to find a solution that people are going to be able to live with.
And I'm not disagreeing with you. It also goes to the wider issue when we talked about canals, and we talked about, you know, all these other things that drainage easements on people's properties, that we need our local realtors or have some kind of code, consumer code, that people can have as a checklist. And maybe that's part of our role, is we produce some kind of checklist that if we can't get the realtors to work with us, then let's just produce our own consumer checklist.
So, to that point, that is one of the reasons why I asked for a workshop early next year to just address the issues that are surfacing as a result of our focus on sea level rise, stormwater management, climate change, because it's a whole new way of thinking about how we address these issues. And it's not going to be easy.
No, it's not. Commissioner Welch?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with you, we're going to have to make some tough decisions, and we already are. You're fresh back from Europe, pursuing, you know, sustainability initiatives. But I want to thank staff for the great work they've done in the Stormwater Fee, on the Stormwater Manual. I think along the way, we're going to have to be flexible, and when these kind of unintended consequences pop up, we deal with them. And what I heard is that our Administrator is working on addressing this. I think it has arisen as an issue that we all want to address. I mean, the disparity is obviously there, Commissioner Eggers, between the individual owner and a single owner of multiple parcels. So, I hope we would direct staff to deal with this urgently and bring back to us their best recommendations. But I don't think there's any bad intentions anywhere. This is an unintended consequence that we see now, let's go ahead and deal with it.
That's, okay. And I just had one more comment. Yeah, I'd like to, I agree with Commissioner Welch, I'd like to see us move urgently on it, but if there's a compromise way that we can work with the landowner to come up with future plans and not be disrupting people that already live there, or making them try to replan the whole park when it's full, you know, and I know that we had some rules in Largo which didn't have anything to do with stormwater, but, you know, if you were going to replace a unit.
We still have the requirements for, for example, the fire separation between units and the minimum size, you know, requirements, and so, those still all apply. One of the challenges is because of the manufacturer nature of this, there's a limit, especially if they're HUD certified, there's a limit to how much we get involved with on the building side. We tie, we do the tie-downs and the utility connections, but beyond that, we're not really involved, other than the fire separation component of it. So, yeah, we're absolutely aware of the varying different components, and to the Administrator's point, we're trying to meet to talk about the variations and whether or not there are unintended consequences that we need to.
And do we know why it's come up now as opposed to two years ago?
I don't know if I have an exact answer. When we originally met, we were talking about.
We met about a month ago, and so, the, some of these was clarification of language and some of our interpretation, and so, we went through those with them. And in fact, coming even out of that, I didn't, I wasn't aware until this morning that there was a different interpretation about what we actually came out of with the meeting between me and the, and the Executive Director. The, I mean, the issue, whether or not people came today or not, we were addressing it, okay? We were addressing it because he raised it as a concern. He raised a concern last, a week ago, Friday. We have a staff meeting tomorrow where they're trying to meet. You have a current ordinance that's in place that staff has to interpret and apply, okay? And they're trying to do that, but they need time to do that because it has unintended consequences among several departments. And so, they're, they're coming together to review that, to hear the concerns that were raised, and see what options that we can come up with.
Well, and I guess what I'm saying is, can we take a look at those current interpretations and suspend them, for lack of a better word, until we figure out what's a better way? I mean, you're talking about unintended consequences. Well, we have some unintended consequences, apparently, so let's.
I think that's what we, as staff, that's what we need to look at.
If we just recently came up with this interpretation.
That's, no, this has been, in fact, in place for some time, okay? It's just being raised, it's just now being raised to us. And so, we certainly, I mean, as we come together, we're going to look at that, but I want to get all the departments involved and not go based upon a couple of comments from.
Right, well, in the meantime, I guess we have people waiting to get into their home, so maybe we can ease up a little bit for, until we figure it out.
I'm sure there's some macro reason that there's been a surge of these issues today, and I don't know what they are. Maybe those folks that represent those Manufacturing Association could tell us that, that, you know, there are new, new construction techniques and better quality, and they're trying, people are trying to upgrade, and, you know, maybe it takes them, you know, upgrading their, their unit from 700 feet to 1,200 feet, but they can do that now. So, maybe there's a trend in the industry that's causing this, I don't know, but.
Well, I know part of our earlier conversation that the Commissioner was alluding to had to deal more with the flood plane ordinance and the difference between Pinellas County's ordinance and FEMA's regulations, and so, that was part of what, in their early conversations, have been trying to address that. have been trying to address that. That's akin to maybe a parallel track to this conversation, which is more focused on the Stormwater Manual. But we're trying to look at the, those multiple aspects of this. I mean, it is a very complicated issue, and there's multiple things that need to be worked through and addressed.
Okay. We want to get to, it's perhaps Mr. Ayotte can talk to the issue that we just brought up, why the urgency now, and-
Right. Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners, and Administrator Burton. My name is Jim Ayotte. I'm with the Florida Manufactured Housing Association. We're located in Tallahassee, Florida. Our association represents the factory-built housing industry in the state. We represent home builders, community owners, developers, and retailers. The reason that we're here today is that this issue has burbled up. It's at, it's at the top now. It's a crisis situation. It's a crisis situation because we have members that are anticipating, that have actually homes that are scheduled to be delivered to their property, yet they can't get permits. We have other community owners that are actually sitting on homes in their property, but they cannot be installed. We have other homes that are sitting at the home building plant that have been built, but they're just staged there until we resolve this issue.
Is it statewide, or is it just Pinellas County?
This is just Pinellas.
And how many homes are currently being affected?
I would-
You just mentioned all of the above.
Yes. And so, I would say that we're looking at at least eight to 10 homes that are sitting there in community that have not been able to be installed yet. There's at least, I would say, three or four homes that are at a home building plant. There's several members that I've spoken to that are expecting homes to be delivered. One member I spoke to the other day said, "I am expecting six homes next week. Can you resolve this issue by then?" And I said, "Hopefully, we can." But let me start off by saying, I know this, this is a very recent issue. So, the floodplain manual went into effect April 1st of 2017. Business was as usual until a little bit earlier this year, and then things really started to heat up. And it started to heat up, for the longest time, our members would go and get permits. It was not an issue. And now, when members go to get permits, they're told, "Well, I tell you what, you know, we'll issue you a permit if you agree to do attenuation." And they're saying, "What's all this attenuation stuff?" You know? And so, now that we're totally implementing this, this is where the rubber hits the road. It's becoming a, it's becoming a problem. I want to commend the administrator because he has been very attentive, and Blake has been very attentive as well. The reason we're here is because, unlike you, I have constituents. And my constituents call me and say, "We have a major problem, Jim. Do something about it," you know? I pick up the phone and talk to Mr. Pressman and say, "What can we do?" And he said, "Come to the commission meeting and talk about how important this issue is." I know you're working on it, Administrator, but this is a critically important issue for our members. Let me see if I can boil this down. Here's, here's really what's happened, is the floodplain manual tries to plug our industry in to a place where we don't fit. What the, what, what the interpretation is, is that mobile home parks, you are commercial, you are considered multifamily housing.
Go ahead. I think we need your information.
Right. And so, so what happens there is very simple. They said, "Multifamily housing, anytime that you expand the impervious surface of the whole mobile home park by more than 3,000 square feet, you need to do attenuation." What does that mean? I have one community over in Clearwater. They have 386 sites. They're actually being, they're paying a stormwater management fee based on 330 equivalent residential units, 330. Yet, they have a maximum 3,000 impervious surface expansion for that whole community. Then, you have someone else that owns their lot. They have a 10,000 impervious surface exemption. The problem is, we don't fit where we are. We are single-family housing. We should be treated like single-family housing. And that's the problem. We're not right now. So, I think staff is looking at this and saying, "Well, you know, it says you're not single-family housing. So, we're going to assume that you're multifamily housing, and so, this development occurs to the, the whole community." One thing that we need, really need to consider, when we replace a home in a community, we're not redeveloping that community. We're redeveloping that lot. And so, what needs to be done is, the exemption needs to be on a per-lot basis or a project basis, not on the community-wide basis. That, that only makes sense. I mean, 330 equivalent residential units, and you have a 3,000 square foot exemption, yet if you have one, you have 10,000? That makes no sense. So, this thing, we just don't quite fit there. So, here's what I would suggest, that we really need to look at this at a, at a per-lot basis because we are single-family housing. Make no mistake about that. And I also think that we can even make some more progress with this. There's best practices out there. If someone replaces a home, let's come up with a list of best practices. How can you reduce stormwater runoff? There's practices out there. Let's put together some practices as well. Between those two things, I think we solve this problem. Thank you.
Okay. I just have one question for you. Thank you for the information.
Certainly.
So, in these individual mobile homes, are they required to buy flood insurance if they're in a flood insurance zone?
It depends. And so, this is, this is not the elevation issue that I think we're-
Now, this is simply if they're in a flood zone-
This is simply, this is simply stormwater. So, whether you're in a flood zone or not, this, this is just stormwater.
I understand, but stormwater affects flooding-
Right.
-in some cases because it becomes overwhelmed.
Right. So, manufactured homes or mobile homes are treated the same way as residential housing. And so, if you're in a flood zone, you may or may not have flood insurance. If your manufactured home is, if you have a loan in your manufactured home, if you have a mortgage, then you're required to carry flood insurance. If you pay cash for your home, then you may decide not to. It's at your own peril. You know, but flood insurance-
Do they inform the manufacturer home owners about this when they move their home into a flood insurance zone?
Yeah, this, I mean, this is a totally separate issue, stormwater management and being located in a flood zone or different-
I understand, but we're talking about, what's been mentioned is, in some cases, these are impaired waterways that the flood zones, the floodwaters are going into. So, let's say it's a creek, and so, that's where it disperses, and the creek is not capable of handling immense amount of flood-
Right.
-of stormwater.
Right.
So, therefore, it floods, and it's therefore a flood zone. So, that's why I'm asking-
Right.
And you don't have to necessarily answer it today, but that's something to talk about with staff.
Right, right. I was going to say, you know, and I live in Tallahassee, and I live on a lake. And I'm pretty high elevated. And I know that the city of Tallahassee complies because they send out notices to me every year saying, "Hey, by the way, Jim, you really should consider flood insurance if you haven't bought it as well." We have the same thing in our industry as well. Some homeowners say, "Hey, that's a great idea. I want to do it." Others say they don't. But I tell you what, anyone that has a mortgage on their home, and if they were in a flood zone, they are required to have it.
Required to.
You know? And to me, that's a fairly good option. I mean, I looked at some flood insurance rates. I mean, if you're looking at a pretty low cost home, you're looking maybe $600 a year. If you're looking for a home that's close to, you know, 70,000 or 80,000, you might be looking at $1,200 a year. That's not a, that's not a high price to pay for the risk that you're assuming by living in a flood zone.
Okay. Any other questions for this gentleman? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Schiller? Andrew? Schiller. Okay. John Hall?
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you all. I represent a 402 home site, manufactured home community in Largo Caribbean Isles Co-op. Co-op is not owned by a single owner, as many of the other in the industry are. It's owned by a membership of the community and operated similar to a condo.
Okay.
Okay? And we are under the same requirements. Recently, we had a home that we were bringing into the community, and we were told, informed of this current issue, and had some concerns about the future of the community and what that would mean to, as far as Ms. Long alluded to, the impact they would have on our residents. As I said, our residents are either shareholders or non-shareholders. None of them own their lots. They either own a share of the community or they're renting their land, but none of them own the land that their home sits on.
Do they own the lot?
They own their home itself, but not the property.
Got it.
Which is typical for the industry.
Correct.
So, if you place an undue hardship, such as what's being discussed today, on a community that's been there for 40 years, it's going to be passed on one way or another, be it through rent, maintenance fee increases, or a special assessment through the shareholders. So, that's our concern here today, is that if we require this in the future, it's going to place an undue hardship on our membership. One other thing that I wanted to mention was, I don't think any regard has been given to current levels of impervious surface. Most of these communities have been there for 40-plus years. We already have developed the lots. There's already, you know, a current structure on them. In most instances, this is redevelopment of an existing site. So, I think we need to look at the calculation of how much impervious surface is there today and how much is being added, which I think is what Mr. Ayotte proposed with a per-lot calculation. Because the majority of them, it's not a net add overall, very much at all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Brandon George?
Good afternoon. I'm, my name is Brandon George with Sun Communities. We own four mobile home parks here in Pinellas County and well over 100 throughout the state of Florida, one of the largest. Concern here with the occupancy of these parks. In Pinellas Park, I gathered some numbers. There are some 16,810 mobile home sites for 55-plus residents in the county, 97% occupancy. If we start moving around and having to take down sites in order to accommodate this requirement, you're going to be, you're going to be affecting seniors. Very important at that point, get across to, to the board here. The other part is, you know, as we redevelop these sites, not the parks, you know, we're looking at removing a home that basically has had nine lives, and where now it's time to remove it and put something new, newer on it. 50 years ago, the size of these homes were much smaller. And so, people put in a 12-foot by 45-foot home as an example, and they put a little lanai on it, and it kind of grew that way. And it had 11 or foot, 12, or 12-foot driveway width and wide. When we remove all of that, we're putting back a home that is now up to current standards and codes, and putting back a driveway roughly about the size that was there. So, we're really not affecting, in my mind anyway, this, this runoff issue. We're just putting back a home on a lot that is now brought up to current codes and is, is, is going to last for a long time. And I would just make one last point. You know, we're not changing any of the setbacks here. These sites are the same sites. We're not encroaching on other sites. We're using the exact same sites that are there. We're just removing an older home and putting in a new one. And that, and that benefits everyone.
Is the home, is the home itself, the size of the home, is it getting bigger in terms of length? I mean, setbacks not so-
Not necessar-, I mean, every site will only accommodate a certain size home. So, it could be a 24 by 48. It could be a 28 by 52. Driveway size is roughly the same. It'll go, go back as far as we want it to go, back to the, the back of the home, but oftentimes, it doesn't even need to go that far.
Well, you were saying that they, that the old ones were like 12 by 45 with a lanai. Are you saying that the ones-
Well, that was just an example. That was just an example. Every, there's all these different kinds of size homes there. I was just giving you one example of, of a smaller unit that just wouldn't be viable to purchase and put on in today.
I understand. So, that was my question. Is there a trend towards a little bit larger?
A little bit larger, yeah. Yes. Yep. But not necessarily. It depends on, on the home.
Hey, thank you.
Thanks.
John Hardeman?
You.
Okay. Landon Wetzel?
You.
Okay. Do you wish to speak?
No.
Okay. I'm going to read into the record those who are also present that filled out a card, and my understanding is that you're waiving your time to speak. If you're not, raise your hand, and then I'll have you come on up. David Eastman, you wish to speak?
Yes.
Okay. Come on up. It said that you were waiving your time.
How about that?
Okay.
My name is David Eastman. I reside in Tallahassee, Florida. And I'm here representing Lowes City Mobile Home Park, which is located at 28th Street and just below 54th Avenue in St. Petersburg. Lowes City is a 343-space permitted community, built in 1957. The property has been occupied by mobile homes over those years. There have been, the sites were all built and established. They've paid their taxes. They've taken care of the governmental charges that have been imposed on placement of homes, and they've been operating for all this time. That property was recently sold, and the buyer bought it, understanding from Pinellas County that they had the appropriate zoning to be able to replace homes and that they could use those spaces as they were permitted by the state of Florida and by Pinellas County Health Department. And they sought to get permits. And you've asked the question, and I want to answer it. When did this issue come up? Well, for me, representing that particular community owner, it came up in September of this year when they went to apply for replacement homes for the, that particular property, for replacement homes on sites currently occupied by double-wide mobile homes. And they asked to replace those four sites with four double-wide new homes, 219 homes. The, the property owner had bought those homes to do that, and they put them up for sale. They showed people those homes at the manufacturer's lot and at their plant, and they got approval. They, the, the people signed contracts to buy. They put down, down payments. They were ready to go. They walked into the development offices, were seeking a building permit, and were told, "Can't have building permits. Can't have building permits for any of these four homes because you need to meet all of the stormwater requirements under our Stormwater Manual." They wouldn't accept the permits across the table with a check. Why? They were told they had to execute a letter that said they would agree to do all the construction work necessary for stormwater permits, for the stormwater attenuation, as Jim called it. And those homes are still sitting there. I've got some pictures, if I could.
Okay. If you will put them, so where the seal is-
Big seal.
Right in front of you. Move your papers.
All right.
Where the seal is, just put it as you would see it.
Okay, great. So, this is a Skyline home, and there were a few people that were involved in this on Lot 541, Robert and Sandy, I'm going to use M as their last name. They're from 67th Avenue North and 10th Street in St. Petersburg. They purchased a Skyline home. They asked to have it placed, they wanted to have it placed on a lot. I'm sorry. Can I continue?
Yes.
Thank you. The, the county said, "No, you can't have a building permit to do that until you attenuate your stormwater issues." They have been denied that use. They, they are presently waiting to get that home. There's a, another property, Lot 332 in the same park, Elizabeth D. She's living in North Pinellas County, on 104th Avenue and 2nd Street, and she purchased also a Skyline home, also was told it would be ready and could be placed, and they haven't been allowed to do that. They've been told since September that you can't do that unless you sign a paper agreeing to do the stormwater attenuation. Lot 359, or a couple from Ohio, Anna B. and Stephen C., North Olmsted, Ohio, they signed a contract for the purchase of a home, and also were told, "You can't have it installed or permitted." The, the county building office said, "We're going to require," and I'm reading a quote, "require a notarized letter from the owner stating at a minimum, 'There is no expectation for inspections or the release of a CO,'" imagine that, "certificate of occupancy, "'until the drainage and other requirements are designed and constructed.'" Now, understand, they had not yet seen an application. They didn't know whether it was 3,000 square feet, 2,000 square feet. But the reason this issue is coming up is because building permits are being denied. And people from Ohio who want to move here and become citizens of this county are being denied the right to have their home. They're planning to move here in February. Nobody can tell them today that they're going to have their home. This, this issue really has, I, I agree with Jim Ayotte, Todd Pressman, and others who have said it's a single-family home, because that's really what it is. People are moving into a mobile home and living in it as a single-family home, and they're renting the space. That's what the property was permitted for. That's what it's been operated as. To say that there's 3,000-square-foot impervious surface for the entire 343-space Lowes City Park is really, it's almost absurd to consider that that would be the standard compared to a 10,000-square-foot exemption for a single- compared to a ten thousand square-foot exemption for a single-family home. The other thing is, these folks that we're talking about, these are not wealthy people, this is affordable housing for retirees, it is an age-fifty-five community, and people want to move in there, the homes they're selling are affordable, and these are retired schoolteachers, required firefighters, other individuals who really want to have a home in Pinellas County, can't do it. I would suggest to you that the staff needs to work on this quickly, they need to free up the building permits, and allow people to finish with their homes. These contracts were entered into before September of this year, when all of this issue came up. So, just, we are asking really that you take a look at this three thousand exemption, treat these single-family homes as single-family homes, recognize they're affordable housing, which is a critical issue in Pinellas County, as it is all over Florida, give these people an opportunity to move in and start living their lives. They're being affected, they're really being affected.
Thank you very much, we don't disagree, we'll be working on it, but I also have to tell you, I remember some of the past hurricanes where we had a lot of mobile home parks flooded, and I remember getting frantic calls from folks wanting to know where, how we were going to help them. And I'm not saying it's your mobile home park that you're representing, but this is a bigger issue, that we really need to make sure we're doing it properly.
Yeah. May I respond to that just briefly?
Quickly, please, yes.
Yes, one of the things that this does with a three thousand square-foot exemption is it requires things like swales and detention ponds and those kinds of things to treat stormwater, not necessarily for flooding, but in doing that, in putting in swales, and putting in detention ponds and retention ponds, you're really changing the face of that community that's been there for some sixty-two years, and they're not, it's not a new development, it's not a redevelopment, it is just an existing property that they're trying to continue operating just the way they have been.
Perhaps part of the common sense solution is to see if they've had any flooding in the past, and to make that as part of the determination. Because, again, I just, we've had a lot of mobile home parks and individuals that have been flooded.
And I do understand, if I'm not wrong, that you're requiring elevation requirements on new home placements and so forth, and, you know, it seems appropriate to try to avoid the stormwater issues that you talked about with, do they have flood insurance, are they a height above the stormwater flow? I believe there's a thirty-six-inch requirement that FEMA imposes, and it seems appropriate to take a look at those issues, but that's not this issue.
Not today. I know, but it's part of the whole issues that we've been trying to talk about. Thank you very much.
I appreciate that, thank you very much.
Okay, now, again, these are people who said that they were going to waive their time, Maureen D. Cosola, you're waving, okay. Only wave your hand if you're not, if you wish to speak, okay. Trent Goss?
Not waiting.
Sharon Giliano? Wendy Jones? Lynn Jelenek? Brian Keller? Darna Lopez? You're waving your time? Or you wish to speak? Okay, come on forward. That's why I'm naming every person who's registered.
Thank you, thanks for the opportunity to speak. I don't have anything really different to say that hasn't already been said, but just want to kind of reiterate some of the points that have been made. One with the lots, and I'm sorry, I represent, we have two communities in Pinellas County, one is in a flood zone, one's not, and we have recently been affected, as of January, we ordered two homes, we had a couple more on order, they were delivered, we tried to get permitting, they were replacing homes that were already there, and same, basically the same size, and just to try to beautify the community. They sat, we weren't able to obtain a permit, so they sat on our vacant lots for about six months, and thankfully, these were homes that we were going to set up and sell, they weren't homes that somebody had already pre-ordered, we do have a situation with that as well. So, bought and paid these homes, unable to obtain a permit, so they sat there for about six months while we tried to resolve the issues, which we're still trying to resolve, and I know some of our issues are going to be discussed later on in the week, along with the stormwater. However, thankfully, we have other communities in different counties that I was able to reroute the homes to. Now, the other home that, we have a retiree from Massachusetts, same scenario, retired police officer that's looking to move down, they've visited the community, you know, with family for the last thirty years, and definitely was looking forward to retiring in Gateway, where they've visited, you know, for thirty years. That home is currently one of the ones that he's talking about that's sitting at the factory, you know, they've signed contracts, they've paid about fifty thousand dollars of their total fees, so another point that I wanted to make is, yes, it's affordable housing for sure, for seniors, but affordable is relative. I mean, they're still buying a brand-new home for, you know, a hundred thousand dollars, probably at the end of the day, when they put their home on the lot, get it developed, and, you know, it's a gorgeous, beautiful home. So, a hundred thousand dollars is affordable for the county, but that's still, you know, they have fifty thousand dollars held up right now, that's a lot of money to have somebody held up while we try to, you know, decide if we can get their house. So I just want to make sure, you know, kind of reiterate some of the points. Same thing with the, you know, the elderly, they're looking for the season, they ordered their home back a while ago to try to get down here for the, to enjoy this kind of weather while they're snowbound up north. So, again, nothing that people haven't already stated, I just want to reiterate. Thank you.
Thank you. Donald McLeese? Michael Marion? Gregory Olayet? Wish to speak? Okay.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Gregory Wollat, I live in St. Petersburg, I've just had a new home installed, very thankful that I did. The reason is, the old one was not conforming to hurricanes, tornadoes, or anything of that nature. The new one, two-by-six walls, fully insulated, thirty tie-downs, thirty tie-downs, never seen anything like it, and I'm very happy to have it. I'm trying to speak on behalf of the people who came down, like I did, from the state of Maine twenty-five years ago. Not much money, but retired here, love it, love Florida, affordability, that's why I'm here. Many people are here because of their fathers and mothers left them their older-type mobile home. So therefore, they've taken it over, they're not going to live there long, let me tell you, who wants to live in a thirty-year-old mobile home? So what do they do? They purchase a new one. If we put these constraints on the new mobile homes in the parks like my, like where I own myself, we own the park, it's not a rented park. If we put these constraints upon the new people, they can't move in, we're going to lose them, we're going to lose the taxes, we're going to lose the population. The homes we have now, where I am now, is approximately a hundred and twenty units. So if we have to remove homes to make space for runoffs, we're going to be down to about ninety homes. Thirty homes are not going to pay taxes, they're not going to be productive in this, in our community, and that's what we want. I think there could be a good solution between your knowledge, bringing forward a solution. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Kat Paluzzi?
Please.
Okay. Ben Roddy? Charlene Kribbel? Chris Roddy? John Hulley? Brad Collison? Joseph Blaney? Michelle Smith? Susie Taylor? Maureen Wade? Nicole Weiss? And Eric Zimmerman? Okay, that's all the cards that I have. Thank you all for being here today, and our staff will be meeting tomorrow.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, David Ballard Geddis, Jr.
Good afternoon, Commissioners David Ballard Geddis, Jr., I live on Georgia Avenue in Palm Harbor. Taxation without representation is considered an act of actual warfare in this country. This board does not have the liberty to ad hoc third-party forms of taxation underpinning a non-ad valorem levy undertaking our county ad valorem property tax lien, double taxing civilians without duly elected representation, nor does this board have the freedom to allow unelected water districts the powers to aid and abed a third-party undertaking of civilian property using a fee simple title variance application. I caution, underpinning a non-ad valorem levy undertaking our county ad valorem lien, as this board, as this self-election of self as stemming constitutionally from Article Two, Section One, is declared as an invasion from within, as an act of treason, levied as an act of war in Article Three, Section Three of the Constitution, such political manners are seen as an actual invasion in Article One, Section Ten, measured as an act of actual war based on pre-sentiment in the Fifth Amendment. Choosing to birth water jurisdictions, assuming to take the liberty, property, and life of the Gentiles as process due under the Fourteenth Amendment exhibits a purview as to the underlying will and intent of this Constitution. As prescribed, the due course chartered by the county to include the district to include this, Hamilton's first Constitution in hindsight, is in need of being audited on religious grounds, in particular, the reclaimed water variance application. This government has done nothing to protect or conserve the water supply, acting only in on, capitalizing in on its usage, wasting water, and taxing us, the civilian population, erroneously for water privileges as set out in Resolution Ninety-five, Two Eighty-Six. As based on the Fourteenth Amendment, the usurping methods of this Constitution, both therein and thereof, is in default. The non-ad valorem assessment underpinned, unclearly labeled, on the county ad valorem property tax lien is the aiding and abetting of an internal third-party levy, based on Statute Three Seven Three Point Zero Six Nine Seven, giving rise to an unelected private political undertaking as enumerated from Article One, Section Two, a usurpation of political power formulating direct taxation, a poll tax, while simultaneously assuming to disable and dissolve the current government as declared, as the reclaimed water variance application in conjunction serves as a third-party facility, fee simple title eminent domain taking of civilian property in both Statute One Fifty Three Oh Three, Section Five, and Statute Three Seven Three Point One Three Nine. The county's proactive planning department is and has promoted the harmful use of water, deliberately not planning properly, neglecting, omitting, breaking water code, and is renavigating with illegitimate charges, hoping to reconstitute itself in Statute Three Seven Three Point One Nine Seven in the formulation of oppressive forms of taxation based on dissension without duly elected representation. Be not mistaken, double taxation without duly elected representation is an act of warfare. Thank you.
Greg Pown? Okay, we're going to now go to our consent agenda, is there anything to be pulled?
Move approval.
Second. Okay.
Thirty.
Motion by Commissioner Eggers? Second by Commissioner Long? Whoops.
Item thirty-one.
I'll do that next.
Okay.
If we could get past consent, let me... Okay, it passes unanimously. We are going to pull forward two agenda items, because there's people who wish to speak, we'll start with item thirty-one.
Item thirty-one was only consent, that's what I was trying to pull out, but they could still speak.
Sorry.
We had a miscommunication.
We can let him talk anyway. Okay, we pass consent agenda, and thirty-one is just to go to a public hearing, but for those who are here to speak on that, I'll have you come forward at this point. Towing rate amendment, it's about the towing rate, and Justin Heller? Sorry about that.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
First of all, very happy to be back here again, I was very happy to get the call the other day about the rates were actually being adjusted finally. We're very happy about that across the industry. Just a few things that we would love to see with this adjustment happen, would be the anticipation of how the community is growing, and how that's going to be affected by the verbiage in the actual rate adjustment. Something simple like all the other counties, we have for extraction devices, dollies, gojacks, stuff to help, whether it be an all-wheel-drive vehicle, something that we're greatly seeing an influx of, which is the electric or hybrid vehicles, you know, we're seeing a huge increase of those in every single county. They require a lot different procedures to safely, securely tow the vehicle, and do it within the manufacturer's specifications to make sure it's done accurately and professionally. For example, Sarasota, we're allowed to utilize extraction devices, and we're allowed to charge twenty-five dollars for that. If it's not specifically outlined in the verbiage with the rate increases, you may start running into seeing some of these other companies out there that are not following manufacturer's specifications, oh, I can't charge for that, so I'm just going to grab it and go and drag it. It's unfortunately an ugly elephant in the room within the industry we operate in. We're a very large provider in that industry, all over Florida, but a lot of the smaller guys don't take those precautions if they're not getting a dollar for it. So something we would like to see would be maybe a little bit of a verbiage in there, where we can allow to use these extraction devices to be able to clear across the board, provide a better service, where it doesn't matter if it's the big guys like us, or one of the newer companies that's starting, that if somebody has, you know, a hundred thousand-dollar Tesla, that's being towed properly. Somebody has an all-wheel-drive BMW, it's being towed properly. There's a difference between a two-wheel-drive car and an all-wheel-drive, and we would like to be able to have a, kind of like a clear, concise across the board, as the rest of the counties do, where we're able to actually, because we do it no matter what, but to be able to actually be able to charge for those devices, so that way, other companies aren't making the industry look bad by not doing it. So that's something we would love to see.
Okay, thank you, that's excellent information. Next is Mike Seaman?
Hello?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners, my name is Mike Seaman, I'm from Orlando, Florida, I represent the Professional Recuperations of Florida. We do appreciate working with staff on this, and we appreciate that they are advocating a rate increase. I'd like you to consider what we submitted originally, which earlier this year was adopted in Polk County, now very far away, and just recently, those same rates were adopted by Lakeland Police Department. Currently, it's going to be scheduled for Seminole County very soon, and we feel that those rates are fair, and the, you just, you just approved for line number thirty-seven, three-point-four million for buying new vehicles. County has a lot of increases in the cost of doing business, so does towers. You just approved one-point-three million to buy an auto parts for the fleet, and towers have the same thing. We're faced with real heavy insurance increases, so, like I said, we appreciate staff recommending some increases, but I'd really like you to consider what has just been adopted at Polk County, and that's what we submitted to the commission and staff earlier this year.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Mike, before you go, and the other counties, Seminole and Polk, did they write in some kind of automatic that you have to come and review it, or did they just do a change across the board with no automatic? Because to me, that automatic is... Because to me, that automatic is a good thing. Do you know what I'm talking about? Yeah. Well, either it's either a cost of living or a consumer index or something like that.
It was strictly rates.
So there was nothing guaranteeing that three years from now or anything like that?
No. In Brevard County, we do have a CPI. It does have to be voted on by the commission. It doesn't automatically take effect. In lean years, it did, there was no effect. Just last year, we got the same thing in Miami-Dade County. But in some counties, the rates is one part, the ordinance is another. So we love to have the CPI, and we think it's very important, and staff did recommend it instead of waiting, and these prices currently being charged in Pinellas County has been in place for nineteen years. A lot has changed in nineteen years, and we would like to see that, but it's so much more important, at least get the rates. But yes, it would be good that staff doesn't have to work on it. It is what's considered to be the standard of our world. The cost of living goes up, then other things go up. So yes, we'd love to have it.
Okay, thank you. Marson Johnson, Jr. Wave? Okay. I didn't have any other cards on this agenda item. Oh, yes, okay, sorry, I'm not sure I got it, but whoops, I do. David Lloyd, sorry. Different color card, I got confused.
Thank you, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name's David Lloyd, and I'm speaking today on behalf of, you know, the towers, but also CTS Towing and Transport, Clearwater Towing, very professional towing company. But talking like what Mike Seaman had said, you know, this industry itself, you know, there's a big need for what we do on a professional level. In the last three to four years, the insurance attack on this industry has been just overwhelming. Some industries have had insurance attacks that don't know as much as ours, and some of the actual facilitators or operators have actually gone out of business to this. You know, in our particular situation alone, we looked at insurance rates, and some of it is due to the fraud in insurance that's going on in Florida and some in California, but we're talking insurance rates that in three years have gone from a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to insure a fleet to almost three eighty to almost seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So you have this massive increase. Also, with these vehicles, you have a good amount of, you know, liability, so you're carrying close to two million dollars on these vehicles. So as Mr. Seaman had said, you know, we like the fact that you are looking at these rates and would like to see, you know, the maximum possible rate as far as what we have, and also have something in there for an increased index. One point I wanted to bring up, and I didn't know if it was clear, if it was looked over, but on the initial section one twenty-two dash four one, there was a provision in there for a fee for granting what we consider after-hours gate fare out of hours. And that was, you know, in Hillsborough County, Hillsborough Manatee, you know, they do a fifty-dollar rate on that. Pasco just adopted a thirty-five. In Pinellas County, it was a reasonable, so we had to kind of put that in as far as, well, Hillsborough was fifty, reasonable is fifty. I really feel that that's something to look at, and it does twofold, because when you have to have someone come out after hours, you are sending the person out to actually have to come out and release his vehicle. But by putting it at the fifty dollars, wherever that amount was, it also keeps some of the competitors that aren't putting their best foot forward and aren't doing what is professional that are actually overcharging. So, I mean, I think that's something, I don't know if it was looked at or overlooked, it seemed in the new ones, that wasn't there, but please, please take a look at that, the section one twenty-two dash four one, while you also give consideration to the rates. So thank you for the work that you've done, and thank you.
Okay, thank you, David. Okay, now what I'm going to do is move forward Agenda Item Forty, because we also have folks that are here that have been patient all afternoon and morning, so go ahead with the...
Agenda Item Forty is recommendations from the Tourist Development Council to fund three fiscal year two thousand and nineteen capital project funding applications. These are for the Salvador Dali Museum, seventeen point five million, St. Petersburg Museum of History for two point eight million, and Tampa Bay Watch for the Discovery Center at three hundred thousand.
Okay, and I want to recognize who's here. If you urgently wish to speak, please come forward. If not, then that would be Dwayne Vergent?
Vergent.
Okay. You're speaking in favor of Tampa Bay Watch?
I'm just here to answer questions from the commission.
Okay. Trevor Burgess, here for... Wish to speak?
The Dali Museum, just super quick.
Hello.
Hi, I've learned a tremendous amount about county government, having been here all day, and come on, this is Karen. We'll use our time together, yeah.
The two team are snappy.
Yeah, we'll make it snappy. I really encourage all citizens to come spend a day here, you learn you don't want to talk about zoning, I think. In two thousand and eleven, the new Salvador Dali Museum opened to much fanfare. A collaboration of the community, public and private contributions, including money allocated by this very commission helped to create a permanent home here in Pinellas County for a world-class collection of art by one of the world's most famous artists. The original St. Petersburg Museum opened back in nineteen eighty-two, so the history of the community, history in the community now stretches for nearly forty years. That investment has really paid off, and over the past eight years, attendance has soared to around four hundred thousand annual visitors, many from overseas and many coming to Pinellas County specifically to see the magnificence that is the Dali Museum. Today, we can all be proud that the Dali is the most visited art museum in all of the state of Florida. The team at the Dali has worked hard to be good stewards to the community, helping to build an enduring institution, an institution that can last and thrive for generations. In front of you today is the next step in securing that legacy. A project to expand the exhibition space, to add education and curatorial space, and to add and correct deficiencies in critical infrastructure, including parking that comes from serving this many visitors to our community. Thank you for your historical support of the Dali and for your support today for the future of this preeminent art museum. This investment will really help cement the Dali's place as a world-class arts institution for many generations to come.
Thanks. Hi, I'm Karen Lang Johnston. I'm chairman of the board of the Salvador Dali Museum. I'm the luckiest woman I know. My family has been in this community since before there was a Pinellas County, over a hundred years ago, and I'm really proud that we have four board members who are second-generation board members. Our support for the Dali and this community runs deep and long. We know that how the Dali has changed our community for the better because we were born here. We know that your investment has paid dividends, and we appreciate your support in the past, nineteen ten. You already have our economic impact statement, where you know we bring over a hundred and sixty-one million dollars a year to this community. We can be better, we can have more education, more exhibition space, as Trevor has said, and our research further shows that if we are able to make our expansion a reality, seventy-five visitors per night more than we have now will be part of our contribution back. The Dali brings the world to Pinellas County and St. Petersburg. Over seventy-five percent of our visitors come from someplace else. And the Dali brings our community to the world. We have, right now, we have over a dozen works of art on loan out in Europe, and annually we have hundreds that go abroad, and all of that brings people back to us. Thank you for your time, thank you for listening.
Thank you for being here today. Tim Bogot is here as well, and Hank Heine on the Dali. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Nice to see you again.
Thank you, nice to see you, I love you too. I come as an interested citizen, interested in the Dali Museum. I came nine years ago, if you recall, as a member of the Tourist Development Council. Commissioner Seale and I and many of you worked very hard at that time to get funding for the new Dali, and as Karen just said, Karen Johnston just said, a hundred and sixty million dollars now is the current economic impact of the Dali. When I came nine years ago, that number, as I recall, was fifty-two million dollars, so we've got it three times. This is fun, isn't it? This is fun talking about this kind of thing versus zoning. So we know the Dali works, and we expect that if we build this new facility, including the parking, the parking is needed, we do not have sufficient parking right now and cannot rely on the Mahaffey Theater, that we would expect to attract seventy-eight thousand new visitors, about twenty-five thousand new room nights to the county, and that equates to about forty million in additional economic impact. So that would take us to about two hundred million in total economic impact, about four times where we started just eight, nine years ago. The county surveys show that about seventy-five percent of the people that come to the Dali come from out of town, first of all, so they're staying in hotels, and secondly, they come expressly to see the Dali Museum. The high-tech nature of the exhibitions that will be part of the region and the new Dali will continue to put us on the map as a place of dynamic business activity that appeals to younger, a younger demographic. And the Dali lease is still ninety years left, believe it or not, on this new facility, so it can be a generational project that has an enduring cultural legacy. Parking, as I mentioned just a minute ago, is critical. We have twenty-five to thirty thousand visitors per year that we turn away because of insufficient parking, so please don't get mixed up by the fact that we have the Mahaffey next door and Albert Whitted nearby. Often, when there are events at both or all three of those facilities, literally, the Dali is turning people away. This also is not a precedent in any way, as all of you know, the Blue Jays included parking, as did the aquarium, so we hope that you will do the right thing here and help the Dali move forward again. Thank you.
Hank Heine?
Hello.
Commissioners, Madam Chairman, if in deference to the time of proceedings today, I would be happy to answer any questions or otherwise.
Okay. Any questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Long.
Mr. Heine, maybe you could just elaborate a little bit on the plans for the parking garage should all of a sudden, for whatever reason, everybody start driving autonomous vehicles or don't need the parking garage?
Thank you, yes. Actually, it's not a parking garage and a new extension of the facility, it's one unit that connects by Skybridge to our current museum. The whole structure is flat floors and coextensive. At any time that we need more space or less parking, we can expand in that space. Flat floors, future-proofed for future perhaps without cars, but with need for assembly places and always a need for education, which is our high card and our great investment.
Thank you.
Just a quick question on that, you mentioned education. Talk about, just briefly, about the scholarship programs that you might have for folks that are looking, that may not be able to afford the educational classes.
Well, yes, thank you, Commissioner Eggers. We bring in fifteen thousand students into the facility. Currently, they do it on the run because we don't have an assembly place for them, there is inadequate space. But they get a docented free tour, and they learn about the history of art and a little bit about Spain, perhaps a little bit about food if they can eat in our, a kid's meal in our cafe. Also, we go out with our Dali Mobile teaching, it's a kind of Trojan horse, where we teach mathematics and proportion through art. And so this goes to every public school in Pinellas County over a five-year period. It's a co-investment between the schools and the Dali. Further, we teach a citizenship class, it's called Junior Docents, and we partnered with the University of South Florida School of Medicine and determined that there's an appreciable increase in self-esteem by learning to talk to one's peers about a matter of importance. And so we are very proud of that program as well. We go out to the rec centers and teach art, so we not only bring people in and bring the kids in free, but we go out to the community with our volunteers and our faculty.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Welch?
Have a quick one. And Tim mentioned it was nine years ago, and I think this has certainly been a great experience with the county. It was much more controversial the first time y'all came. The whole issue of using bed tax dollars for a museum was controversial, but I think you've proven that it was a great investment for Pinellas County and the TDC, and I think you also helped move us to that place of consensus with the sixty-fourty split. And so we're funding all of this out of the forty, and that's a great thing. I want to ask you about the Grand Prix, that's been an issue that y'all have had to work around. Does this new facility help you better manage the Grand Prix, or do you still see that having an impact on you?
Well, you know, the city and the county benefit from arts and sports, we know that. Although we may have a predilection for one or the other, we know that the community needs both, so we are good partners with the Grand Prix. Actually, this building is designed to accommodate them because four days a year we are closed, and they use that strip of land as a paddock for their race cars and repairs and all, and transport. So this was designed with very high ground floor ceiling so that the Grand Prix would not be interrupted.
And what would be your target date if this is approved?
Well, we have to dance around the Grand Prix, so that starts, of course, in March. So we would break ground hopefully this March, but we break ground in April and then have it ready and up for the next Grand Prix, that is the first floor, probably twenty-three, twenty-two months for the whole project.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Commissioners, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay, from Tampa Bay Watch, we have Larry Johnson and Mary Ann Renfro.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Mary Ann Renfro, I'm chairwoman of the Board of Directors for Tampa Bay Watch.
Larry Johnson, member of the Board of Directors of Tampa Bay Watch, and we'd like to introduce our new executive director for the Discovery Center, Dwayne Vergent. Good afternoon. Dwayne's been with us about two and a half weeks, and he's already made us all, like, over the moon with all the work he's done already and how quickly he's absorbed all the facts and figures to continue to have us move forward.
Great, welcome.
Thank you. So thank you very much for this opportunity. We really had not prepared very much to say, but just to let you know, progress report-wise, we have finished the exterior of the building, the city has completed that portion of their build-out, they are completing some of the interior work for us. Very soon, we'll be given the green light to start doing our interior work, and then our plan is to start installing our exhibits around the first of the year. We are looking to be completed and ready to open in early March, and that obviously is going to be flexible depending on the city of St. Petersburg and the date, but we want to be ready so that when they give us the green light, we've done all of our soft openings and all of our testing of our exhibits, and we're ready to open up. One of the most exciting things, I think, for us is that not only are we going to be reaching all new audiences at this wonderful downtown location, but we anticipate about a hundred thousand visitors and visitors from all over the world. We don't have that at Tier Verdi, as you know, because that is really more of an education center and an opportunity for people to come and participate in programs and volunteer work. At the pier, we are opening up the story of Tampa Bay Watch and, more importantly, the story of Tampa Bay and how it has moved from being in great peril about thirty or forty years ago to where it is today, which is a huge economic driver for Pinellas County and the Tampa Bay area, a recreational resource for us, an opportunity for our residents and visitors to enjoy being on it, in it, above it, around it, and we feel very, very proud of the fact that we have helped to make that happen. So we're going to tell that story, and we're telling it to... And we will provide an opportunity for visitors to understand how critically important the Bay is to us and to them, and also enjoy this wonderful facility at the new pier. I have to tell you, it is, if you, I know you've all been out there, but it is just absolutely fantastic. You could not put a price on this piece of real estate, and we are so absolutely thrilled that we were chosen to be a part of this. So I, you know, I like microphones, so I will talk all day, but we've been here a very long time today. So I would definitely let, Dwayne, if you'd like to say something, I know Mary Ann has some comments she'd like to make.
Just briefly, excited to be here, really excited about the pier and the project and how it's going to impact St. Petersburg and the county. I think one of the questions that we've wrestled with in short term that we're addressing is the name, the Discovery Center. We have a marketing group that we've hired to help us with the branding, and I mention that because I've heard that there's a little bit of confusion in what we are, what are we going to do out there? So to clarify, essentially, we are a museum, okay? And when you take a look at what a museum is essentially, it focuses on a few areas. Usually, it's history, art, culture, science, where we're weighted, much more weighted towards the science side, but I think we're addressing all four elements in what we'll be providing. We'll have exhibits, we'll have interactive displays, we'll have a collection. Ours happens to be primarily a live collection, but we do have a collection that is there, and educational programs. And lastly, what are the things that one hopes that they inspire? Well, part of that is that we take a look at restoration, preservation, and the conservation of Tampa Bay, and that we take a look at basically making sure we provide information, educational opportunities, but really, the inspiration. And what does that mean? That means that people come out of there, they're inspired to thought, and in our case, hopefully, they're inspired to action. And that's what we're looking for, and that's how we'll measure our success. So thank you for your consideration.
And finally, and briefly, I'd like to add that I'm truly excited about the opportunity to be a part of this project in particular because it meets so many different aspects of things that attract visitors to our area here in Pinellas County. As you are all aware, there's a growing trend in tourism to address the visitors who want an eco-tourist experience, and that is definitely something that this facility will provide to them. We also have a planned restoration site that's within close proximity that we're working with, with the city of St. Petersburg. So it would give them an opportunity to come and learn about that project, but also an opportunity to get involved here in our area while they're on vacation, doing volunteer work, which is really exciting. And that is another growing trend amongst people who are interested in eco-experiences, and that's, you know, to have an experience where they actually become involved and do a volunteer project or somehow give back to the environment while they're on vacation. So I'm very, very proud, as a resident of this area since 1963, when my family moved here from New York and I was three years old, to be a part of this project and to tell the story of the transformation of our beautiful estuary Tampa Bay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you so much for being here. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, and thank you so very much for your support.
Thanks. We also have Rui Farias, who said that he would speak. Answer any questions that anybody has? Anybody have any questions?
Yes, I do. Madam Chair.
Yes.
Thank you. Well, we talked about your expansion plans a while back. You had, and I won't share what it was, but you had some pretty big plans for a special event. Is that a special event still in the works?
It's still in the works. We've been ongoing negotiating with the folks in Lincolnshire England to, and we've met with a number of other cultural facilities, as you know, around the county, to build this relationship between Lincolnshire and Pinellas County. And we're still in line as long as we follow our timeline and get everything completed and built, that we would have our first exhibit come from England in October of 2020, and then January of 2021 would be the opportunity for us to bring the Magna Carta here.
Thank you.
Thank you. I noticed Lee Allen is also here.
To answer any questions this morning?
Okay. Want to recognize that you have stuck it out all day with us.
I thought the city of St. Pete had all the fun and zoning, that's all.
Sometimes some unexpected things come up, so. Any other questions for them?
We do have an update. I know one of the questions was our lease, and the city council did approve a new lease last Thursday, actually, for us.
Great.
That's taken care of.
Perfect. Thank you.
Ten more years.
Glad to hear it. We're excited.
So can I ask a follow-up on that? Because that was one of my questions. So what are the new terms, the new lease terms from the city?
As far as the length, 10 years. The maximum, that's maximum allowed by city charter, but we're still moving forward with going to referendum for a 25-year lease.
When do you see that referendum happening?
We'll be meeting, actually, with the mayor's office next week, and that was one of the things I was going to bring up. An original conversation was the next election cycle to do that.
So it looked like the sailing center that was just on.
Correct. Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. The recommendation is to fund these applications, but it does include a legislative determination that the Tampa Bay Watch Discovery Center is recognized by this board as a museum. Yes, sir.
Just a question, so that we understand, we're not funding today, we are sending to staff to negotiate as with the other ones we've done where we would negotiate marketing terms, use of event space, and all that kind of.
Correct. This is only moving it to the next point in the process. Those negotiated funding agreements will come back with us, come back to us with a return on the investment detailing some of what you already mentioned.
Okay. Move approval.
I'd second that.
Okay.
Do have a question.
Commissioner Welch?
Can you speak to the Tampa Bay Watch lease? That's also a waiver.
That's a waiver of.
The 50-year requirement.
The guidelines as far as the room night requirements.
No, the.
No, the lease.
50-year lease for new construction. Where do we stand with that?
Thank you, Commissioner. The lease has been executed. We've had several supplemental lease agreements, but it is a 10-year term that was approved by city council.
Okay. Was that recently?
I want to say in June.
Okay. So you have a 10-year. Which is, it's interesting because this is half our project as well with county, tiff dollars going in there. Yes, it is. The pier project. Okay, so we're waiving both of those. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so I have a motion from Commissioner Justice, a second from Commissioner Welch. We're ready to vote. Again, thank you all for sticking it out with us today.
And I disagree, zoning is fun. It's good stuff.
I disagree. Okay, unanimous approval. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Claps of joy. Those are good to hear.
Oh, mother.
Okay, we are moving back to Agenda Item 37, which is the regular agenda.
Agenda Item 37 is the Purchase Authorization for Requirements of Heavy and Light Duty Vehicles. This is a piggyback contract with the Florida Sheriff's Association and the Florida Association of County Cooperative Contract.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Long, second by Commissioner Welch. Moving on to Agenda Item 38.
This is the Sixth Amendment to the Purchase Authorization with Genuine Parts Company. It's a NAPA Auto Parts for Vehicle and Equipment Parts Management System, and the total amount of $2.6 million over the contract.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Welch, second by Commissioner Long. Unanimous approval. Agenda Item 39.
This is the Local Arts Funding Agreement with Creative Pinellas for Marketing and Promoting Pinellas County, and total amount of $1.077 million.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Long, second by Commissioner Welch, and I want to recognize Barbara St. Clair has been sitting in the audience as well today. Okay. And I also want to make comments and compliments of how far we've come because a couple of years ago, this was, had a lot of questions.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Barbara.
Okay, Agenda Item 41.
This is a grant agreement with the Florida Department of Law Enforcement for the Statewide Criminal Analysis Laboratory System Grant, the amount of $290,000.
Move approval.
I don't know.
I'll go with Commissioner Gerard, and second by Commissioner Welch. Okay, that's unanimous approval. Agenda Item 42.
Agenda Item 42 is Fiscal Year 2019 Board Budget Amendment to Realign Appropriation of Funds from Multiple Departments to County Administration across several different funds.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Long, second by Commissioner Welch. Unanimous approval. Agenda Item 43.
This is Change Order Number Two to a Contract with Duval Landscape Maintenance. This, in essence, they're having trouble keeping up with the amount of work, and so what we'll do is they're going to continue to provide landscaping and ground maintenance for utilities, so we're going to reduce the amount of this contract and bid it out.
Is there a motion? Move approval.
Yep, second.
Who's the second?
Ken.
Peters? Okay.
No, Ken was.
We still have the screen from the previous.
And it was Ken.
There you go. Screen's still from the previous one?
It's clear now.
Motion by Commissioner Gerard, second by Commissioner Peters.
I think it was Welch. You look so much alike.
It's not a problem.
Was it Welch or Peters?
It was, it's all right.
I think it was Peters.
This is for the landscaping, right?
Yes.
The tax increase, wasn't it?
It gets you guys punchy anytime now.
Which, by the way, just for the record, when I complained the other day about the median on Belcher all the way up to, it did take a little bit, but it's all done, so. Looks much better, thank goodness. It was only about three feet tall, palms everywhere, but looks good. None has anything to do with this contract.
All right, unanimous approval. Agenda Item 44.
These are reappointments to the Emergency Medical Services Advisory Council. Do you want me to read them into the record?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gerard, second by Commissioner Long. Okay, we're missing.
Kathleen.
Unanimous approval. Agenda Item 45, County Attorney.
Under 45, I am recommending you approve staff's recommendation as set forth in the confidential memorandum of today's date.
Move approval. Motion by Commissioner Peters, second by Commissioner Long. Okay, unanimous approval. County Attorney, anything under 46?
Yeah, under 46, I did bring up at last week's agenda briefing, and we did post some additional information. What I would like to do is have the board's approval for Pinellas County to join a pending lawsuit as an amicus to file a brief. Again, this is not going to take any effort on our staff's part. We will be lending our name to a brief that is being drafted by another local government. This is in support of your human rights ordinance. The Orange County ordinance, which is very similar to our ordinance here, has been ruled as preempted by state law by a circuit court there. What this means to you is that some of the protections that are built into your local ordinance that go beyond state law are at risk. Those protections include prohibitions against discriminating on the basis of sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression. Your code also applies across a greater range of employers. So again, we're asking for the board's permission to sign on to an amicus briefing prepared by another local government in support of Orange County's ordinance, very similar to your own ordinance. I know we've had a long day. Val Valente is here to answer any questions if you have them.
I would move to approve.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Peters, second by Commissioner Gerard. Thank you.
Somehow I got unjoined, but I'm a yes. Just disappeared on me.
You made it to seven. Unanimous approval. County Administrator, had a career source Pinellas update. I understand we'll reschedule that.
Correct. So only one other item, which was to welcome Tom Almonte to the county staff. His inaugural first meeting, he gets to see firsthand. So Tom is the new Assistant County Administrator. Obviously, he's going to be replacing Jake, who is going to be retiring at the end of December, and so we just want to, we'll save that one for a later time, but welcome Tom and ask that he go fix all of our mobile home issues.
Yeah, go figure that out.
So that's all I had.
He's still smiling.
I know. Please come back tomorrow. Agenda Item 48.
Agenda Item 48 is Appointment and Reappointments to the Palm Harbor Community Services Agency. We have three appointments.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Justice, second by Commissioner Gerard. Okay, who's missing? Well, we have enough. There we go. Okay. Unanimous approval. Agenda Item 49 is an individual appointment by Commissioner Eggers.
Yeah, just move approval, please.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Eggers, second by Commissioner Justice.
And that would be for Phyllis Coleianus.
Okay, unanimous approval. We are now on to the selection of the 2020 Chairman and Vice Chairman. Hooray!
Nothing like past chairman.
Had six more weeks. Haven't counted them exactly yet. I have.
What are we doing first?
Chair. You can move for the Chairman. Chair. Actually, here.
Yeah.
Move my gavel over. And I would like to nominate Commissioner Pat Gerard as the 2020 Chairman.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion by Commissioner Seal and a second by Commissioner Long.
I'd have to remember how to do this. Okay.
Okay.
All in favor.
There you go. Okay. Now we'll ask for the selection of the 2020 Vice Chairman.
Madam Chair. I'd like to nominate Commissioner Dave Eggers as Vice Chair.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Justice, second by, it was either Long and Welch, but both, so. You can pick one. Okay, congratulations to both of you.
You too. Thank you all. Appreciate your confidence.
Because we have two agenda items left. How long do you think the transportation work session is going to take?
I can move it along. We will need a few minutes of break in order to reset up and close this meeting out, but not, I mean, I'll move through it.
Okay. I still, is everybody willing to hang in there? Because I still would like to get through this today. You know, please note that we only had one meeting in November, so even though you had to almost bring your pajamas, I just figured.
We're good.
We're doing it, so. So I will ask for anything under Item 51, new business.
Madam Chair.
Riz? Yes, sir.
It's not really new business on this, but I did want to bring up a quick thing. My assistant's been talking with your assistant. In years past, in my other office, we used to have a holiday open house. In years past, in my other office, we used to have a holiday open house hosted by the elected officials, and we've been talking with Chris and everyone down at the exchange. I didn't know if there was a similar interest in having the commission host an open house, holiday open house at the exchange, a low-key event. We'd collect goods for, you know, a food pantry, something like that, but have it kind of hosted and sponsored by the commission. It was consensus on doing that. Our office would take care of all the legwork.
Right, so move. Is it open house for the citizens?
Right.
Okay.
I like it.
We can get you more details, but just see if there was any.
Kathleen going to bake all the cookies?
No.
It's Kathleen.
Yeah, you got me worried there. You got my attention really quick.
You did see a little Mona. Let's just coordinate and make sure we can get a date.
Sure.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay, County Commission Board reports miscellaneous items. Unless there's anything, I'm going to ask if there's anything pressing so that we can manage our time. So if you have something pressing, raise your hand.
Pressing?
Okay.
What is that?
Then we are adjourned for this meeting, and we'll get ready for the work session, see you on the fourth floor and.
Here.
It's here.
We're going to, because it's July.
Okay.
Okay.
10, 15 minutes?
Okay.
15?
15 minutes.
Okay. We will come back at 3:35.
Set 15-minute timer.